I'm unmuting everybody.
Okay. Alright, I'd like to call this special meeting on the Sogtak Township Board to order on Wednesday, November sixteen, twenty twenty-two at eleven AM. I will do the roll call. Marcy?
Here.
Israel's?
Here.
Bigford here.
Omri?
Here.
And Aldrich is absent but excused. Do we need to review Zoom instructions, Daniel, or just?
No.
Okay. The pledge, I I forgot. I pledge allegiance to your beloved United States of America and to your republic.
For which it stands.
On location underground. That brings us to public comment. Public, would you like?
I have no comment free.
Okay.
Wow.
Right. Is there anybody participating on Zoom, Daniel?
There is nobody on Zoom.
It brings us to item five, which is approval of the agenda. Now, take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. I'll support.
Promotion by Israel, support by Marcy, all in favor.
I.
I propose. Shinkari's for zero. Alright, that brings us to the meat of our meeting. Payment for sixty-sixth water main installation.
I can speak to this if you would like Supervisor Bigford. Normally, this would appear in the consent agenda. But because of the significant time between now and your next board meeting, Township Engineer thought it was best to bring this before you at the special meeting for approval. So this isn't the final payment to Redline Excavating, but it is the second payment to Redline Excavating, who is overseeing the new water main construction on Sixty-Sixth Street. Everything is on budget. There was that one change order that you approved, but there was only that one. Everything is still on budget. There is kind of a restoration and cleanup that Township Engineer wants to oversee before the the final payment, but he recommends that we approve this payment of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Are there any questions? Daniel, or comments on this?
I have a comment.
Okay.
Yeah, and just it's good timing, just to remind board how this works of the mechanism physically. The sixteen properties that are in this special assessment district, their winter tax bill will now include forty-seven hundred dollar charge here for ten years. So this this is the first tax cycle that that's.
It's more than that.
What the dollar about?
You're forty-seven dollars, I think it's more.
No, it's forty, it's that's per parcel.
Okay.
It's like forty-seven, four thousand seven hundred and eighty.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Over ten years.
No, I think you said a hundred and forty.
No. I'll try to be more clear. I just thought of bring that up because it's very tied to what we're voting on. We're off and running with a new assessment district.
Yeah, and this is not coming out of the general fund, this is coming out of a bond.
Right.
That will be paid back by the Special Assessment District.
And maybe even before the ten years.
Not too soon, you know.
You're right, that's true. Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the payment for the water main installation? Would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve. Redline Excavating's application for payment number two in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents for the Sixty-Sixth Street Water Main Project.
I'll support.
Promotion by Marcy. Support by Homri. So any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote, Marcy?
Yes.
Homri?
Yes.
Bigford? Yes. Israel's?
None.
Shinkari's for zero. Right.
I know.
I'll get there. Oh, there's no memo for it?
There's no memo, these are all different kind of discussion item.
Okay, we have two people here. Manager, great, for Israel's, and I'm the committee for the Township Hall renovation. So, Daniel, you want to kick that discussion off and then we'll
Yeah.
for Israel's.
Yeah, so I did include, we did get an updated schedule for the construction projects. So this includes a final review of the drawings and bid ad, which we're pretty much at final review. And we will be shortly going out for bids. Plans will be available tomorrow, hopefully, or the next day for any contractors that were specifically contacted for this project, which we do have a list of local contractors that will be contacted directly, but otherwise the bid advertisement will appear in the Holland Sentinel and it will appear in the commercial record. And those plans will be available to any contractor who would like to see them. And then you can see that bids would be due, there'll be sealed bids due on December eighth. And we're hoping to award the bid by December fourteenth, I think that coincides with your meeting. And hopefully contracts signed and construction beginning on January ninth. It's a pretty aggressive schedule. And that's really because we're we're trying to keep costs in mind that if we wait till the new year, we could see substantial cost increases. So we want to try to stick to this schedule as best we can. But that's the kind of updated schedule. And then I did want to show you all, because we haven't really, I know that I include this in my my weekly reports, whenever we do get an update to the design, but I did want to kind of go through it with you all. So you could ask questions and and just be comfortable with what what we've kind of come up with. So, as you know, we kind of had to start fresh. I believe we kind of started the conversations in January and really got it going in February. So we did kind of a soft reset. A lot of the work that had been done, we could reuse because it was structural information. It was kind of, you know, diagnostics on our mechanics and the condition of our roof and all that kind of stuff. But all the design work, we kind of stopped. So originally, we had a flip-flopping of the office and the boardroom. No one was really kind of buying onto that project. So we went back to keeping the office in the location where it was originally located and keeping the boardroom in its place, but also kind of accommodating some some other uses. So one thing that Abba Marsh pointed out to us was that it's very confusing where the entrance of the building is. And I think if you spend any kind of time here, you will see that people try to come in that door, people try to come in that door, or people are unsure if they're coming in the front door. And when they do, it's awkward because they're kind of on display. And their recommendation was to try to center the building and give it a proper entrance. And that's what we've done in this rendering. So because we're in the building and you can kind of see it, those glass windows, which are great because they bring in so much light, are actually be gonna become the new entrance to the building. We did play around with some alternatives for centering the entrance. This saves us the most amount of money because there's already a header there. So we're really kind of trying to make use of the building itself and not try to force something on it that's not already there. So we would build out a new vestibule, which would have glass doors and have some brickwork on the side with another set of glass doors. There would be a door release, so the secretary or the front desk person would have control over who could come in. And of course, we could release those and and keep them open if we have a lot of traffic. But you would walk into a new reception area. So there'd be seating here. This would be the new front desk station. We tried to make it larger to accommodate multiple workstations. And then we'd have storage up here and then we'd have a big area for collating any materials or putting together packets. We wanted it to be kind of multifunctional if someone else in the staff is working with the front desk person. As you know, we do have an assessor who comes in twice a month. They really don't require a lot of space. We're imagining that the assessor, because the assessor will be working more with the front desk person as they train them to do kind of, you know, not basic tasks, but more of like, you know, recording of information or updating addresses or
Well, they're now active in processing all the property transfer affidavits that we get.
There we go.
And also the P R E, for residence exemption applications or resictions. So and it makes it go, just pile up in an inbox and work it.
Yes, so yeah.
On top of it and can scan and send things to Kelly if necessary. The whole process is going quicker.
Exactly, so we see more interaction between the assessor and the front desk person. So i- it it would work out. And if there is a joint project, someone could come up there or if there's a trustee that wants to do work. I mean, it's, it can be anything. But we wanted it to be an area that multiple people could work in comfortably and that we were also kind of maximizing storage and workspace. You'll see over here that we're eliminating quite a bit of these closets, they're getting all pushed back. And then the closet areas that we couldn't fully eliminate, we're making them really just kind of flush to the wall. So there is electrical, I believe, in this first panel. So it'll all be kind of flush to the wall, we won't have all that closet space anymore, but we will gain room. We're keeping this exit door here. So this will still be functional for the elections if people are entering here or exiting here. We're keeping the emergency door here. But this will be a kind of ten, well, it won't be a kind, this will be a ten-foot cased opening. So it's actually wider than it appears here, so no doors, but just a large space for walking into the boardroom. So we wanted that because we're saving money on doors. And we're also thinking a large space is great for circulation for elections.
Is there a new door?
Where?
In, well, right near your cursor there.
Here?
One right there.
No.
What's, what's that?
This is a closet.
That's a closet.
So we do have some electrical, we do have some internet boxes, we do have some, yeah, things that just can't be removed. But instead of having a large closet for them, we're just making this flush cabinet. So you open it up, there's things that you need. And that's it, because right now we're using it as storage.
Daniel, can you go over again? I didn't understand it, how that wall will look in between, yes, the boardroom and the
So it's a ten-foot cased opening, so it'll just, so it's just like a
It's just a ten-foot open.
It's just a ten-foot opening. And it'd be like molding around it.
So it's not a wall at all.
There will be, it's not the full expanse of this, so it's probably like from here to here.
Oh, with an opening.
With an opening, so just a big opening, because we were talking about doors, we were talking about folding doors. That was all increasing the budget. This way, you know, we didn't really see a need for closing the doors ever, especially if we have an extra security measure here. So we just let simplify it and have a big case opening there. So then we're keeping the mechanical room, but as you can see, all of this gets to be pushed back because we are moving some of the mechanicals to the basement, which allows us to push back that wall and gain more space.
How much width, if you will, are we gaining with pushing these closets back and pushing that mechanical back?
You can kind of see, I think it's like three to four feet.
Oh, the whole thing?
Yeah, that gets pushed back.
And then these pretty much.
And that gets pushed back, yeah. So you'll have a lot better visual for the for the audience, because that's all gone.
At one point, they were saying they couldn't do that because it's
They had to figure out how to do it.
So are we moving the furnace or?
We're moving, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, some mechan, some mechanicals are moving downstairs.
No, yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
At one point, I know they acted like, we can't move the furnace, so that's that's excellent.
No, they'll be able to move that down to the basement.
Okay.
That's great.
And then, so this will be mechanicals in here still. But what is now the kitchen area, we're gonna knock down the wall that now exists between this kind of like weird entrance way to the the state police and have this as combined space. And this just becomes storage. So it's gonna have better lighting, you're gonna be able to maneuver, you know, around there. Like right now, we have really awkward places for storage. So this is a now a really big place for storage that's a little more convenient.
And Daniel, the the wall behind us here?
Yes.
So what is that mark in the center?
A TV.
That's a TV.
That is a TV.
Now, are we losing the window?
No, we're not losing the window.
That's just not indicated.
It's just not indicated yet, we're not losing the window, we're not losing the door.
This door, that I got, okay.
We're not, yeah.
So, yeah, I like that.
Yeah, no, that window stays.
We shouldn't block it.
Yeah, and I don't think that, yeah, we we probably won't have that big board there.
Well, that moves all over the place.
Yeah.
Maybe it'll be stationary.
And I know at one point, you guys talked about, when I'm looking at the board table, is it is it still the plan to have the furniture be very like, not as bulky and like easily condensed and flattened in case this, yes, okay.
Yeah, no, the the tables are all movable and they're stackable too.
Okay.
So they easily, so they're on rollers, they can be, you know, set to lock.
Right.
But we can also unlock them, we move up the tables, they all come together and we can roll them into a different space. Yeah, so all the furniture was picked, yeah, because it's movable and they do
They do, this area has modest handles.
And they have a little cart that they did on.
Okay.
Okay.
There's some gaps.
But we can always, yeah, we can always
Put venom there.
Yeah, we'd always address it.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on, so we're in this reception area and then we're coming out. So this will be a nice hallway here. We won't have that's kind of that storage component, but these are going to be the two bathrooms that already exist and they'll be all updated to be ADA compliant. So have new flooring in there as well, a new sink. I believe that we're reusing the toilets because they were recently purchased and they are ADA compliant.
So they're both new, I knew the one was in.
Yeah, the both, yeah, there was, we've replaced both.
Okay.
Yeah. And then this is the biggest change, which we think is cool. So we're pushing out, the the wall that's there is getting pushed out here more to create a really nice conference room. So there'll be a clear story here, like a transom. We'll have a door into here, we'll continue to have the window. We were unable to move the staircase just because of the cost, so there'll still be an entrance to the staircase to the basement, but we'll be able to fit a nice big table, eight seats. We'll have this built-in area here with a sink. So we'll be able to, you know, make coffee or pour a glass of water. We'll have a dry erase board on this side, we'll have a TV on this side. We just don't have a a good space right now where we can collaborate on work or a space that's nice to bring in guests and this kind of fills that need.
Will the stairs be replaced?
The stairs will be replaced, yeah, we'll get a brand-new set of staircase.
That's so dangerous.
Yeah. And they'll be to code, they're not to code now. We're gonna get a new staircase that's to code, we just couldn't relocate the where it is.
That's okay, as long as it's a new door.
It's a new door, yeah, all new doors, all new carpets.
What is approximately the change in this side of what's now the zoning size, excuse me, of the zoning administrator's office?
So like you're talking about the size of this room compared to what we're planning for their new office?
No.
Like how mu- how tall is
Right there, I'm bigger, like, how much bigger is the conference room than the
I had an exact size on it.
Than the current zoning administrator's office, I just have to like think about it like in the real
Right, let me pull up the conference room. Yeah, so but I don't know what it is now, but it's gonna be seventeen feet long.
Yes, I'd say it's probably more like
I I think we're adding a good like
Thirteen or fourteen.
Yeah, I think we're adding like, yeah, like four feet approximately to it.
Oh, that's great.
But you can kind of see here like the Yeah, the wall is pretty close to the window as it is. So we're adding all of this space here.
Okay, and there is, yes, you're, we're retaining the window.
And I, yeah, we're retaining the window. Yeah, I don't think that we have a plan to eliminate any doors or windows. And I believe this is actually getting bumped out further into the hallway than it is now. It's substantially larger than it is.
So in this picture, so the window is not shown.
The window is not shown, it's your, it's behind. And it's kind of a, so this is a combination of plans that we've gotten from Abba Marsh and then M O E, who's doing the furniture. So not all of it is perfectly to Abba Marsh specs, which we asked for. So you can see in this picture, the cabinets aren't centered. We've asked for the cabinets to be centered, so this cabinet goes away. And then there's a window that's not shown that'll be up here to kind of let in more light and centered in the cabinetry will be a sink. So that just has to be updated from M O E. But Abba Marsh has that plan and that's the plan that will be circulated in the bidding process.
And so the new sink is probably right behind where there is outdoor water.
This, no, the sink is gonna be on the interior wall side.
So they have to connect to the current bathrooms, plumbing ways?
They're gonna run it, yeah, underneath the flooring to where the current bathrooms are. So that's the, that's the, and then we come into the office space itself. It's somewhat similar to what we have now, but we tried to create private offices because that was a concern that a lot of people had, that they they needed privacy. So it's it's kind of a tight space. But we do have an area here for storage and collating. This first office that's more open, that's kind of similar to the layout that we have now. You'll see that there are two stations here. This is what we're imagining for the clerk's area. And we also have the the big fire cabinets, what they call fireball, fire.
They're fire cabinets, fireproof cabinets.
Fireproof cabinets. So the big steel ones that are in the corner over here now, they're gonna be right here. We'll have a spot for the deputy clerk, there's a space for the clerk. Deputy clerk really kind of wanted something more open. Everything else in here is private. So we kind of felt like it gives the openness for the deputy clerk, but it's remains somewhat private because everybody else is closed off. But you will enter, you know, if you're coming into the office space now, you'll be brought through this hallway into here. And the door that we have planned will lock and have a a keypad entry. So if we have to close it off during board meetings, it's not a problem. And if you need to enter it, you could just press the keypad and let you in. And then we have one, two, three, four more offices. This first office is, this is what we have planned for the treasurer. So you can see it's this nice L-shaped, let me go pull up the actual, so you can see it. I believe this is the treasurer's office. So this is kind of a good do, so we'll have glass walls. Every wall will be kind of these fabric systems walls with a clear story. You can't really get a good view of the clear story here, but the walls will go up pretty high and then that kind of last foot will be this glass transom. So it lets in a lot of light, but it still keeps that privacy. So it's not like anyone really can look right through it, it's just kind of at the top. And then we have these glass doors again to kind of bring in more light, but then also create that privacy. So we have this U-shaped area for the treasurer, we have a whole desk, I mean, a whole shelving unit. Some of this can be modified, but this was what we thought would be the best thing. We have some upper cabinets here. This is what it would look like when you're coming in. And everyone's getting these new, I believe they're called tulip chairs. We thought they were the most comfortable when we went to Hayward's. So these will appear in all the offices and these will also be the new board chairs. So this is what you'll be sitting in over here. And then to go back. And then next door, we have the building officials' office. This is kind of an awkward office because of this little jut out. But one of the bigger things that the building official wanted was an area to lay out plans. And so that's what we tried to create with this, so it's a it's a deeper desk area. Let me pull it up. There it is. So the building official, oh, I'll try that. The building official will be able to work here. There's a chair, because the building official often has visitors. So there'll be a chair for somebody to pull up and talk to the building official. But if the building official needs to work on plans, these are uppers. They'll be able to just kind of rotate around and lay out these plans. So we've created this desk base to accommodate the size plans that she deals with currently. And then you can kind of get the overview here. So this is the bird's eye view. And you can kind of see the clear story a little better here. So again, we're gonna have nine-foot ceilings in the office space, we're raising the the ceiling height. And then I'll be able to get us about eight foot of these panels and then it's probably a little less than a foot, but this clear story going all around again to kind of try to maximize the light.
Daniel?
Yes.
The ceiling be a drop tile ceiling like this?
It'll be a drop tile ceiling like that. And it'll be all new drop ceiling tile, everything's new. And then we can go back here. This will be the manager's office, so next to the clerks. And I think this is it. This was also kind of a challenging office because of the because it's skinny and we have this weird wall. And that was kind of a challenge for a lot of the furniture, this is what they came up with. So there's a furniture piece here. There's a chair in the office in case there's someone coming to visit the manager. So there's like an area for, you know, docking with somebody. And then there's this larger area for for spreading out and there's two uppers. So that's kind of what it would look like from the manager's perspective, that's the bird's eye view. And then this space, we have the zoning administrator's office. Again, the zoning administrator had some unique needs because they need a desk area that can accommodate the size plans that they review. So that was somewhat challenging.
And which one is that?
Oh, I'm sorry, on the original diagram, right next to Daniel's.
Right here, yeah, this office. And again, it's weird because of this, I mean, I wish that it was squared off, but it causes challenges, like we we were able to move this to the the edge, but not in every case. Here we go. So in this office, we also have a chair in case the zoning administrator has somebody in there visiting. But you can see there's a substantial area here for laying out plans and reviewing and there's a lot more privacy. And we're also thinking like, if there is a big meeting, it's very easy to just move into the conference room. And we're also thinking like, if there is a big meeting, it's very easy to just move it to the conference room. So we were quite limited in our space and I think that we wanted everyone to be able to have enough space where they could have
Mm-hmm.
a small meeting, but we ultimately, we we came to the realization that if if we could fit like one or two chairs in there um, and they can meet with two people, but if they had a big meeting, they have a really nice, you know, conference room to go into now. So this is the zoning administrator. And then I don't think I have a schematic of this, but this is becoming the new staff entrance, um, kitchen area. Uh, there'll be some storage and then we'll also have our coffee machine in here, so we kind of, it's kinda doing a lot of different duties, but we eliminated this kitchen area, so we needed to pick up a staff area. And we thought that this would be great because now we can have an official staff entrance and really direct the public through this now main entrance. So.
The storage area is actually a closet, like a coat closet.
This is a coat closet, yeah.
Yeah, that we picked out, it's it's not like for file storage and stuff, just so you know. It's it's a really nice coat closet, but it's part of the system, so it looks really nice.
It's very nice, yeah.
So so, okay, are all the surfaces cloth?
On the, so we have a, we have an opportunity if we wanted to use they have some there like white and they can be dry erase boards, so we could modify some of the internal systems walls to be the dry or the the dry erase ones.
Yeah, cuz that's what I was asking because several people here currently have need, haven't have a need for whiteboards.
We can totally go through it again with everybody and see which ones you want as a dry erase and then which one you want as cloth.
And then related, if everything's cloth, will there still be the ability to have the, you know, the zoning maps on the wall?
Yeah, I don't see why not, I imagine you could.
Cuz several, you know, we, they're referred to a lot, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that the they're they're visiting, I remember they had things on the walls, yeah.
Also, there's, um, besides just the whiteboards, there's also like a cork board. So then you could handle things on the wall if you wanted the the cork board service. But, or I, you know, it's like a peg, not a pegboard, but it's just, it looks almost like material same color.
But it accepts pins.
It accepts the pins and yet the other side of it could be cloth for the person on the other side.
Yeah.
And, um, this, they're very, they they say very soundproof and in a lot of respects.
There was a whiteboard, yeah.
But you were really interested in the whiteboard.
I like the whiteboard, yeah.
Yeah.
Outside the offices, they had whiteboards too, so people agree with that.
Okay, yeah, cuz we do that for supplies and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But you may want one too for the conference room.
There will be, this whole, yeah, we're playing for this whole wall, yeah, it'd be a a dry erase board.
There is one on, oh, that's right.
And a calendar system.
A calendar system?
So you're not fighting over that.
Oh, yeah, we do need a calendar system.
For the room.
Oh, yeah, I thought that up in terms of.
But we have it in outlook, we.
We can do it in outlook, yeah.
I think it's, I think it's some of the things we dealt with when I worked.
Yeah.
I am this room for meeting, no, I am this room, anyway.
No, yeah, we're gonna need that.
Yep, township boardroom actually responds to a meeting invite if it's free or not.
Question, yeah, but I don't know.
I don't know if everyone uses it.
So Daniel, can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Um. Okay, so we have the building office and zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So Renee is in the, Renee or or Renee's replacement is in the building office.
It no, is in the zoning administrator office.
Okay, and, okay.
And then we have the building official in this corner over here.
Okay, that's where I have it, okay, and then assessor?
Assessor, because they're here just twice a month.
Right, so where would they?
We're try, we're gonna put them up here with the front desk person because they don't really have any need for a ton of space, they don't really store anything here because they're you know, they work for a different company that we contract out with.
Right.
So they have a headquarters somewhere else, so when they come here, they just need a space to sit down and work. So we were thinking that they could share this space when they do come in with the front desk person who will also be assisting them when they come in.
Right, I, oh, you did say that earlier, um, and then interruptions, that doesn't bother them at all, just because that's the main entrance, correct?
That's the main entrance, that's the reception.
That's the reception, yeah.
It's kinda like it is now for them.
They could work in the boardroom if you you were meeting with anybody.
Yes. They could also work in the conference room, yeah.
And then I, I.
That boardroom.
Not, I I realize that, uh, not John, but Abby and Becky don't need a full-time area, however, I'm, where, so if Abby comes into work, where would she be?
Um, when Abby came, comes into work, if she wants to work in the conference room, she can work in the conference room, if she wants to work up front, she can work up front. Um, if the clerk's not there, she could work in the clerk's office.
And there'll be stations that people can, I'm I'm sorry, computers, the computers can work on?
There'll be stations.
And the zone.
Yes.
The zoning administrator's office would be empty most of the time.
The zoning administrator's office will be empty most of the time as well, which we do use that now for the same purpose.
Right, 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 okay.
Yeah.
It was just hard because building official and zoning had very specific needs, one of them being privacy.
Yes. Yes, definitely.
And it was hard to, we we did consider putting the assessor with the zoning administrator. Um, but it just wasn't gonna work to do double duty, so if the assessor really does need privacy, there's options for the assessor. Um, but I think on a normal basis when.
Yeah, they don't really have privacy issues.
No, they don't, and typically when they're here, they're actually bringing another person to work with, so even this chair could kinda move down, you could fit another chair and there could be two people doing double duty. So I think the assessor is flexible, it was hard to, you know, they don't have a lot of space needs. They don't really have any storage needs, other than the storage, you know, the things that we store for them. Becky, do you disagree?
Well, I shared space with them for one day, they do have some storage needs, but it's provided in that, if they sat near the wall and and we kind of discussed this, um, they could have a pad between them. We think most people would go right to the next desk that's more in the center of the room there because it will accommodate, um, handicapped and other, so it gives them a private station with a flipper on the other side or a shelf, what we tried to do in that entry is make sure that every piece of equipment in it is lockable, because it is open to this room. So we wanted to make sure it was lockable and secure, but really right there, they would have a lot of room in that first space, they have plenty of room, they can turn around, they can store the books that they need, and they do have things like um, the board of review stuff and all that, um, and the the other thing, the mail slot, we were gonna.
There's gonna be a a a mail slot right here.
For outdoor mail.
For outdoor.
Not mail, but.
The Dropbox, it probably shows up here, so they don't have it here, this is the M O E plan, but there is a Dropbox right here.
So is it a real Dropbox versus a slot?
Um, we can still have that.
Be nice if it was like the city, the Douglas and Sodder type.
We could have something like that where it catches. It's just gonna be, you know, it's gonna be tight because it's coming into here, so we wouldn't want something super bulky because it would block this.
Well, I think the bulkiness, most of the bulk can be on the outside. I'm just visioning the ones we have, cuz the slot is weird, it's, and you know, and the winner, the bills get wet, they're just going into slot there.
Well, they wouldn't.
Tried to put a basket and it didn't work.
Yeah, well, in this case, they wouldn't be going on the, they wouldn't be going on like the vest, the kind of floor of the vestibule.
That's true. If it could be a real locker box, okay, I think that'd be great, okay, and I think people would feel more confident too.
During, um, election time, we would have one inside the lobby where people could walk in and, you know, put in the ballots and stuff. The same one that we have now, but, um, that would be nice even during the election.
Can I make some comment? Um, so I just love the flexibility, efficiency, aesthetically, um, I like that there's some privacy, the people can work uninterrupted, I love all the work that you've done, I love, you know, just making the most of the space and the furniture, I have two, I wanna tread so lightly because you guys have done so much work, so it's kind of take it or leave it, but
Okay.
these are just my only things that is like, hmm, this, I don't know, you know, um, our water here, I don't think anybody drinks it, I mean, so I'm kinda questioning this sink in the boardroom, especially cause you know.
Okay.
I don't know, and it's just, and maybe we fix the water and that's the issue, you know, that so people can drink it, I don't know why people aren't drinking it, but people don't drink it, right? I mean, I think we use it to make coffee, but.
Well, yeah, that.
There shouldn't be anything wrong with it, we used it to make coffee, I think it's just more of like
A taste.
No, like a mental thing, like people don't want to.
I like tap water.
I like tap water, I mean, we have municipal water, there shouldn't be anything wrong with it.
Maybe we were always told, don't drink it.
Really?
Yeah, something, they're a story, you know.
But, yeah. Trying to assess there's Cali, I I, that's always been.
We're a, we're a testing site for Cali, we test the water every Tuesday.
But to you, what what's, what would the water in the conference room be for?
Well, it'd just be like if you had coffee cups and you wanted to wash them out or you wanted to fill up the the coffee machine, it's just like you know, if, it's just easy access to water.
It's kinda right, or if you're cleaning.
Or if you're cleaning.
I get it, like we have an extra sink in our kitchen and I, at first I was like, that's stupid, we're never gonna use it, I use it all the time, you know, like, I don't know, it's weird, but.
Cuz other way you're.
It was just something I wanted to bring up, I don't know.
Bring up. We can, we can talk about that.
So then I have my plans oriented how we're sitting, so like, um, so I don't know if that helps, but I'll just approach there. Ask this.
Yeah, be careful cuz this is elevated.
I love whoever wrote that, no, don't trip, please.
Cuz you will.
We don't like tripping, okay, so now I have to.
Orient yourself.
Oh, this one's not labeled, okay, I'm sorry, I'm so bad at this, this is why I'm not on the committee and you guys can just tell me to be quiet. So the clerk's office, and I get the clerk, you know, is also our sex stand and people come in and register and they just wanna talk to but just kinda thinking about moving forward and we're not all gonna be here forever, is it? And what's here, this is the?
So that's gonna be like, um, it's like a.
I wonder if I have a picture of it.
It's all the supplies that are in that closet right now behind.
Got it, okay.
Getting rid of all of that and organizing them, so and then.
And that's a good central space.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Above it will be mailboxes and slots for individuals where their mail and things like that will go.
Okay, well, that complicates what I'm about to say, and this is just my two cents.
Okay.
But we do know that the, um, building official needs a great deal of space for the maps and the documents. And the treasurer's office to me just seems tiny, like a closet, so would it be even possible to extend that wall like that, just to there?
It makes it really tight, we played with this, it makes that central hallway, as it is, like, it is very tight.
Even if it just comes like that?
Yeah. I mean, you can do it, but I don't, I don't even know if it would be ADA compliant at that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz we did play around with it and then like if you, you, yeah, we would probably lose the storage.
What is this, I'm so sorry, I.
The stairs.
The stairs, okay, that's, all right.
Yeah.
We tried that in the beginning, Abby, and then they said, well, the employee entrance wouldn't work to extend it up there. Or there was something to do with handicap access and the front windows are a little complicating too in terms of dividing up space.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And so, um.
So you can't even gain like a foot here and just find somewhere else to put this stuff?
I mean, we could, we could try again, I don't think, I don't know how it would fly, I mean, as it is, they were concerned that it's tight, like they warned us, like that's tight. And like we actually try, I mean, it, because the clerk's office is more open now, I think it gives the illusion that you have more space than you do, which is one of the also reasons why
It's very narrow.
we opened that up, we're like, let's just, at least it gives the illusion of openness.
Cuz this is really the clerk's office.
That's right.
Here, so that does make, this is shared space pass-through hallway, okay, and you can't steal from over here at all?
Exactly, yeah. You can't steal over here because then you wouldn't be able to fit that door.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And then the wall would, the wall has to be on one side of the window.
Right, you guys have what you have to deal with, I get that, like, it's not a new build, though, again, I'm treading lightly and please don't take it critical, it's just.
Yeah. You've probably gone through these scenarios.
I, yes, well, yeah, you have the answers, so I, that makes me feel good that you've already tried to balance this, and I'm sorry, and you probably said it, but I was probably trying to orient myself, this is built out into the.
That's gonna be built out.
Oh, so then the two parking are, um, so can you still, you can't drive through there then?
No, you'll be able to drive through there, yeah, you'll still be able to drive through there, no, it's not that much.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and then we might have to, what we wanna do is put in like angular angled spots, so people can now, would gain all this space there.
Okay, okay.
Becky mentioned moving a tree, which tree?
I don't know if we have to move a tree this way.
Oh, we wouldn't have to move the tree.
You mean that new, the new one?
They haven't raised that with us.
That can't go, it can't go for.
Can't go for.
It's planted there because of the road commission rules.
Okay, I don't know if we have to move it that this way, they have not moved it.
I'll take that, sorry, I just came along, it's not a big issue.
It's sad.
Yeah.
It's almost as sad as the size of the treasurer's office.
No, I know, we work really.
But your office is bigger than what you have now.
Is it?
Didn't we say that?
Yeah, you probably said it.
We have to measure it, I mean, right now, is that not very big?
I'll just work at all.
One dumb question.
Joe had it back here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's the pop walker, and only because it's sizable.
Right here. So we actually.
Oh, it's over there.
Yeah, we actually can get, yeah.
Oh, it's in the break room.
It's in the break room.
Okay.
It's the only place, that's the, I know, and that's, doesn't seem like you, I get it, you already, you have.
Yeah, yeah, you only have so much space.
I thought that it really made.
But the copier, I wanna get a new copier cuz ours is at the end of it, where it's made where it's not insured for replacement.
It's like.
Oh, cuz it's never acts out much.
No, it doesn't, it's not wrong with it, but we can get one that's just, that does everything that the the one that we have does now
No, it's.
and it can be much more compact size.
Smaller bookcase.
Um, when I first came here, I didn't understand when people would say something about recall, something, I I thought who would name their copier, recall, you know.
Oh, I like that name.
I do too, but I just didn't get it, I thought you really named it recall, I thought one of my.
It was probably.
What else, um, because we're nearing almost half of our time, what else do we want to cover about this subject?
Yeah. I would like to cover briefly the budget, because I did, I mean, we really didn't know how much it was gonna cost, we had estimates from six hundred thousand to one point something million dollars when we first started the process. I let, um, Dirk know, who was the first kind of overseer of our project from ABBA Marsh, cuz at that point in time, I had a, that we had budgeted about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project. And I had also separated out the cost of ABBA Marsh, which I'm still able to do. We did have two, um, change orders, one was that reset, one was the, um, the, uh, systems walls. So we're pretty much still there, it's eating a tiny bit into the construction budget, but when I say tiny, I mean like a few hundred bucks. So we really still have about six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to play with, but if you see the budget here, this is kinda the, the headline. Right now, we're at seventeen, seven seventeen, seventeen thousand and probably a little more will go away because we're doing systems walls and we're saving on construction elements in the office, but the systems walls with installation with everything is about seventy thousand, so that's gonna push us back up to seven seventy, and that's not including furniture. And I think one of the things that we really, I really enjoyed about the project is that we haven't really had the need to dip into the fund balance yet, and I was really thinking about how can we continue that? So there is about sixty thousand dollars of ARPA funds that remains, um, uh, not dedicated to any project.
What's, where did that come?
We never dedicated it to anything, we said eighty thousand goes to zoning, ten thousand goes to the drain, and, um.
No, I have enough, we went over this yesterday.
But it doesn't equal three hundred fifty thousand dollars, it equals.
Sure does. You're jumping ahead.
I got it.
Yeah, I have it too.
Cause I double checked it this morning.
It's not fully accounted for yet. We haven't spent all of our book.
We haven't spent any.
But I mean, we have an account, we haven't dedicated all of it to a project.
Well, yesterday we did ten thousand for the drain.
Right.
Keeping the ordinance review at eighty.
Yeah.
Which left two sixty-two for building.
Okay, so right now, though, that was new. We said we'll give the every, all the remainder of ARPA to. Um, the building project, but prior to that, we did not give all of. The remainder of ARPA to the building.
But the new addition that we'll talk about is the blue star drain.
That was in the budget already.
No, but I mean, using ARPA for that is new.
No, it's not. It was in the budget. That was approved in.
Okay. But we still have to adopt the resolution, but that's how it breaks down. So with the total, the three fifty-two, that's what we received. And we've been getting interest on this money from my class. So I don't, that's really a question, I guess, to the auditorium, if, cause we get to keep that. So.
We have to spend it the same way our.
I would, I would think it just went up to three fifty-two or a few thousand.
Okay, so we had. We had eighty, so we had, we were gonna dedicate two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds to the building project. And in addition to that, we had eighty set aside for the zoning update and ten for the drain. Uh, improvements for the blue star drain. So that equals two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And we had approximately three hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds, leaving sixty thousand undedicated. So what we could do is we can dedicate the remainder of that sixty thousand to the building project.
Okay, well, that's what we discussed yesterday.
Yeah, that's what we discussed yesterday, but not to the board. So if the project is about seven seventy just for construction and all of that, not furniture, right? We're at seven seventy, we planned for six fifty. Um, but then we're adding another sixty thousand, that brings us up to seven ten. We're still missing about sixty thousand dollars and we don't have a budget for furniture. But the plan from Dirk is always that construction would start. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and there was a plan when I, when I kinda gave the capital improvement plan. I had said, we'll dedicate another two hundred thousand dollars to this project in twenty twenty-three. We were kinda got, you know, cut short a year, but what we could do is say, alright. Looking forward to twenty twenty-three, we were going to dedicate two hundred thousand dollars to this project. Let's still commit to that. So in the meantime, we can borrow from the fund balance, twenty twenty-three budget, we set aside the two hundred. And whatever we've spent, we put right back into the fund balance. So it's as if we never took from the fund balance, but it was always planned for. If that makes sense.
That makes sense.
And then we, okay.
I'm sorry.
When do we expect to have? An estimate on furniture costs?
I'm waiting for that. I'm gonna give Andrew from MOE a call. They've been, it's been difficult because we were at one stage with Abba Marsh. And we're at a different stage with MOE and. Um, they did get us the estimate for the walls, but they have yet to give us the estimate on the furniture. But if we do the two hundred thousand dollar contribution, I know that we have approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollar budget for furniture.
Which, I mean, it sounds high.
But we don't know, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it'd be nice to start getting a rate in this.
We don't know. Yeah.
And is there still any chance of any donations?
Um, I do have, um, Patrick and Charlotte Stewart dedicating a approximately fifteen hundred dollar built-in water station to the township.
Alright, okay. But I'm in furniture.
No, we know that we're getting the best deal possible because MOE or Hayward has the state contract.
Right.
And so whatever kind of discount the state government gets, it will also be applied to us. So it's a.
We haven't asked for anything additional yet.
Right, but we.
Because we don't know the cost, and so.
Okay. No, cause I know like when they redid the um interurban.
They don't.
Everything's free. And I forget the reason why, it was something we couldn't do, but.
Library is another.
Yeah.
They did all the permissions in the library.
Wow.
Not, they didn't, they didn't donate all of them, but a large majority to the library. So I, I think it's worth asking.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, and I know we initially started to kinda explore.
We did, and then we sort of, previous to Daniel being here, we kind of told them to back off and then. Um, now we've kind of re-engaged them, so we're redeveloping that relationship.
Okay. That would be great.
We should.
But we do get the best um pricing, because they do have the government contract for all of that.
We get the best price. We should be able to get an estimate soon, because we literally went there, we, we said, we want this chair for this room, we want this chair for that room, we want these tables.
Yeah.
Everything we picked was mobile, so they have a very good idea of exactly the items that we're looking to acquire. So I, I don't think it would take that much more time to get at least a rough estimate on the product.
I mean, that's what they do. It's a big kind of incident.
It's been a little bit of like hembling teeth, to be honest.
Well, that's.
But we're, we're working on it.
Yeah, cause it's hard for us.
I mean, yeah, your fiscal year. Fund balance scenario, as we discussed yesterday, makes sense.
Yeah.
Big timing wise is pretty solid.
But we need to know that in the talking.
But, but we're talking twenty thousand dollars or two hundred thousand, yeah.
I think it's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars. I'm fairly, I'm fairly confident about that.
Sure it would be.
That'd be fun to see the breakdown, cause it's not that much furniture.
Maybe we pleasantly surprised?
Yeah, when you think of all the chairs here in the dust and the overhead cabinets.
Does it include, I mean, when we say furniture, like workstations is.
Workstation, chairs, table.
Over beds, shelving.
Chelves.
Everything and wall units.
Wall units are separate, so wall units and installation for wall units is seventy thousand, so we did get that.
Okay, good.
But furniture, we don't know.
Alright.
Alright. What else can you?
There is the communication plan. I don't think we need to spend a ton of time on this. I would like insight into.
So, okay, we're moving to item C?
We're moving to item C, yeah. Unless anyone has any questions about the, the design so far or the, the budget kind of approach.
Can I add just one thing about the design?
Yes, please.
The chairs we picked out are kind of a molded plastic, but they're soft, the softer plastic for the boardroom and in here. And their wash ball, and so we were really excited about that. I have pictures of Stacy on the chair, but they're on my phone, but.
They would be with Elliot sitting in.
Yeah, those kind of chairs and. So it's, it's nice and they're very stackable and they come with a rack for stacking them like they say, it's a stack and pour each chair higher. We won't be doing that one.
Yeah. That's. Thanks for how you were.
Yeah, and I, I do wanna say Jackie Brown has been a godsend. I mean, she's unbelievable with. She went through the budget, every single line, had a critique about everything. We were able to cut it down. We got the budget down, I think it was originally seven thirty-six, something like that, and it didn't include the replacement of the roof, a seventy thousand dollar ass.
Oh, which is a shame.
Yeah, she got the budget down and the roof included at that seven seventeen number. Which is.
Down to electric plugs and everything, should have.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, we, I, we really do feel like we're in good hands with, with Jackie helping us out on the committee. But she, she's got an eye on everything and. So.
Thank you.
Like a fruit basket or something. So um we did get a communication piece in from Abba Marsh. It kind of lives with us now, like we can do whatever we want with it. But it walks through the renovation project. Um, any of this can be modified, you know, just, you know, if you have feedback, let me know. Uh, but like scope of work, you know, the importance of the, you know, township government and the offices. You know, about, you know, so it, it's a breakdown. It's essentially like, you know, uh, yeah, communication piece explaining. Um, what is the project, the need for the project, um, the benefits of the project of the community. And we can, but the thing is like, how do we, you know, how do we wanna use this piece or how do we want to get this piece out to the public? Do we wanna do an e-blast? Do you want it to live on the website somehow? Do we want to target certain slides and create some, you know, create something a little more specific? Um, it's a lot of information, that's kinda why I say that. But I don't think it's a bad thing to have it, like, I can create, easily create a page on the website that houses this. That if people wanna go to, they can find, you know, all the comprehensive material. We might be, you know, we even put the bit on there. On that website, so.
Wouldn't it be good to incorporate the, you know, the document I?
I can incorporate that.
Cause that puts it in context from like.
Yeah.
When Saucetuck Township Hall was in Douglas, because the cities were part of the township, and then in nineteen eighty-four, this happened. The dentist moved out of here. I think that's more topical and interesting to public and, like, some of this is great stuff, but a lot of it's.
Yeah. I can make a, like, we can make slides about the, you know, about the history of the building and the history of the township hall location.
Yeah.
That was back the last time it was.
The last time.
That was important.
That's all in this thing, I wrote.
Okay.
And then the history from the county stuff, just to clarify when we did start. But then what about the issue? Shouldn't we at some point? Do a, a press release?
Well, that's what I'm asking you all, like, how do you wanna get that information out to the public?
Okay. I see, I think we should, you know, it's been in the press once, and I forget why or how, maybe Joe did, but it's like, um. We do wanna get, be in front of this. Seems. Gonna start closing parts of the building down, January fourth of November. Then, yeah. I think work towards.
So I just need to know, like, what information do you want in that press release?
A release like December, I guess.
Like, I have all, I mean, there's tons of stuff here, so it's a matter of like you going through it and saying like, this is important, this is important, that we wanna communicate.
We have somewhere in here, um, the fact that. The most recent renovation really wasn't a renovation, it was moving a wall. Because I realize that was one person, but it was out there.
But that's, that's in the thing I wrote.
Okay.
The year the wall kept down, the fact that the furniture is from nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, as opposed to people thinking.
None of those factual things are in here. This is more the philosophy.
And maybe they didn't know, cause this is, yeah, Abba Marsh, right?
Um.
See.
Or no? Yeah.
Cause I started working on this piece, I do. Joe wanted me to. I helped with the press release, so. And I can send it to everyone for any point in the comments.
We just have talking points about like the condition of the building, like the condition of the mechanicals, the condition of the roof.
Yeah.
That like, you know, and that. It's a detriment to like the value of the building itself. I mean, that, that's something that, you know, this is an asset the township owns and we have a responsibility to.
Yeah.
Maintain the value of that asset. And according, I mean, we do know like the mechanicals are on their last leg. That the roof is failing, but you know, we have major issues with the building.
I mean, since we've been on board, we've had a few times where we've had to replace major. Links. Or maybe that door back there, the frame had to be replaced, that's why it happens also, you know, there have been.
Are we replacing mechanicals?
We're replacing one set of mechanicals and another set that are on the roof can be saved, that there's nothing, they don't, they, Abba Marsh shouldn't feel like it's necessary to replace them. So we are saving money with that, but the mechanicals in here are being replaced.
Okay.
I'm only asking because if we say.
I know.
Yeah, then we have to show that we're doing something about it, I think, if we're painting a case.
About it, yeah. Yeah, these mechanicals are terrible, roof is fine, um, roof is failing though itself. Um, our stairs are dangerous, they're not to code.
Right.
The wire is dangerous.
The wiring, yeah, they pointed out.
It's really dangerous.
Wow.
It's.
Those are good points to make, I think.
Yeah.
Cause I think, there's, there's some great points in here, but they're kinda buried.
Yeah, um.
I just think that document doesn't highlight certain. What are the ten most important points in their narrative?
Right.
Add in the more topical, local stuff.
Less is more.
Right.
Right.
That just is even preparing for the meeting, you know, because it would be.
And part of the press release would be to know for more information, see the website, the total breakdown of the, you know, the, um. The funding and the.
I think it'd be great to put everything on the website that people look for, but this.
No, I like that, taking, you know, the most relevant, um, talking points and. Information from this, giving um some historical background and um. Just really demonstrate the need.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. And having the press release also direct people from, you know. You know, more information, see the. For report, one second.
Is that, um. Is the document we're talking about? Available in like word form? It's a PowerPoint. So is that editable?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well. John, the document that you had prepared for Joe, is that pretty much ready or you're, it's still?
No, it's, it's bullet book, it's two, I think, two page bullet books. To be incorporated into something, so it doesn't.
Okay, it's not, I got it.
Yeah.
So, but, but you're finished with it? You have everything there that you wanted to?
I think so, cause it was based on the, the years, what year did something happen? And then the fact that nothing has happened in thirty years. Cause I even put in like. Who was president, what movie was number one, just like, wow, that's how long ago that they did the furniture.
Maybe you could have that as something separate, like if you decided to write it up and send something that's really interesting, you know, an article in itself. You know, clean, put that together. But Daniel, so you've seen what John's prepared?
Yeah, it's like a history of, of like.
Does that feel like something that you could draw from that and from this report and?
I don't know if it speaks to the need for the renovation. I think it speaks more to the history of the building. That makes sense.
But we can pull some needs from this.
We can pull some needs for this. Yeah.
Man, that's what I would.
Who is the you?
Where?
Um. Value of proper offer, you attract employees, you communicate, you increase efficiency, you conserve energy.
I think that some of this was directed towards you. The board? I think that like in some cases, staff.
Oh.
Staff has to explain to the board or the council the need for the renovation. In this case, the board is as set as a strategical, the renovation of the building, and so.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah.
That probably either is not quite relevant, or it just can be reformatted to be addressing the general public.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, like I, I guess, like sometimes I think Abba Marsh's clients.
Yes, yes.
Need to.
Need help selling it to their board?
Need help selling it to their board.
Got it.
Exactly.
Do you see the need for, I mean, I kinda do see the need for a press release. I do think we should be ahead of it and, you know, just try to. Ward off any criticism or whatever, um, or just educate people. Um, are you in agreement that we need a press release or it would be helpful or?
Um, I mean.
I just.
I do think that there's a need for some sort of a communication, but it's sensitive, so like.
Yeah.
You know, I think that it's hard for me to say, yes, there needs to be a news release, because I need to know. When does it get released? You know, do we wanna do it before bidding? Do we wanna do it after bidding? Do, you know, so. When is it most important to get the piece out? Like, timing, I think is important. And we wanna make a determination what the best timing is, um. Is it something that appears in the paper as a news release? Is it something that's? Put in an e-blast, is it, you know, so I feel like there's a lot of questions still out there, like how. But I don't, I, I think it's probably in the best interest to have something like that, yeah.
And I, I don't, it's nice of this, I don't think we need the whole history, but just the, just that which.
This is more.
Yes, substantiates what we're do, what we're trying to do.
Do, yeah.
Um. So.
And I think the fiscal picture, basically, I mean. And I think the fiscal picture, basically, I mean. A lot, a good share is coming from the federal government. And, and nothing is impacting. Tax rates or.
Mm-hmm.
And that's all in here.
No, it's.
I know, but again, it's not concise.
Right. Oh, in here you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this definitely, this is too much.
No, this is great, but it's.
This is a lot, yeah, it's a lot of stuff.
And he.
Cause they're real bad, I think.
Yeah, yeah, no, a lot of it's just. Liberty stuff, but there's great stuff in there.
Yeah, yes, I mean, if a board member wants to take some ownership over this, I would work with them, that's my concern that.
Yeah.
It was like this I had to ask them for, and I'm on this committee, it's a lot of work, so like, I'm in the middle of.
Yeah.
Talking with Gary about Alba Marsh, about these last minute details and the budget, and I'm also talking to Andrew about. Furniture and budget and bidding, and I just see this as overwhelming.
Yeah.
Like, I don't necessarily have the bandwidth to start up a communication piece when I am so in the weeds with this, um.
Would we consider? You know, paying someone to do this?
We could.
Cause I've, I feel the same way as you.
Yeah.
It's tax season in December, and then we're actually, we'll be, we'll be packing up things to get ready.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I think this should go out in mid-December.
I just don't know who would even do it for money, like who would you pay to?
Well, that's first, okay.
Yeah, there are.
I mean, I could ask Morgan if she could go through it and pull out some.
No, 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 I mean a professional like Jermaine.
We could ask him.
Like do it for five hundred dollars, I don't know, cause we could all have input, I'm happy to sit with him and I've asked that with you.
Yeah. And give the input.
But then the pulling, the mechanism is a lot of work.
It's a lot of work, cause there's a lot of moving parts and you have to figure out like, what are the most important things that you wanna communicate to the public?
Keeping it clear and concise.
Yeah. And how do you organize that?
I think Becky has something on her mind, go ahead.
I do have something on my mind, I, uh, because I'm probably new. I put myself in the position of, say, if I were a community member and letting it, what do I wanna know? And the first thing that I would say is, oh, that's a lot of money for just a bunch of new furniture.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd say, why don't you just do new furniture, but then I'd wanna know that the infrastructure doesn't work, that the building really isn't secure and safe. To have business in the future, um, that structurally, it doesn't meet the functional needs, things like that. I, I think are really important, that's what I wanna know.
Yeah.
From my layman's point of view.
Yeah, and then, you know, this, in my view, stuff missing from what they said, you know, we are the fastest growing township in the county in the census.
We, um.
Seventeen percent increase.
Mm-hmm.
That's more work, that's more service, that's more everything.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I wonder who did it for the school.
That's a good idea.
Who did the news press?
They did a really, really great, well, just their educational, um, materials, like. Our bathrooms are not, you know, compliant for people with special needs, their, their, their heating and cooling system was.
Our vet.
I can't move the, can I do it?
Yeah.
You know.
The video is not available.
I think they did a really good job, and I don't know if it's. Forgive me if I'm saying Gordon, did Gordon steal?
No, I don't know, I said, I think they did a really good job.
Who?
Yeah, it might be.
Who is, are Gordon, um, the planning manager?
Yeah, he may have just been, they have been a part of it, I don't know.
Gordon.
He might be someone where we start with, uh, is there somebody willing to do this, we're willing to, to pay them, we already have all this material prepared.
Yeah.
We just want it put together, you know, in that format, like Becky was mentioning, like. Not overwhelming, not so much that they're gonna get lost in it, um.
Yeah.
Just laying it out.
Yeah, but that takes a lot of craft, I think it seems easy, but it's a lot of craft to edit, to be very specific about.
Right, that's true.
The most important things to communicate.
Um, I guess the.
I think your ideas, go ahead. Well, I just, I really do support your idea of asking Gordon, I think that's his, his business of where he is, you know, he sold his last business.
Mm-hmm, he, yeah.
And now he's more in the healthcare arena, but he knows he could do this, I believe, so I'm sorry to.
So you're thinking Gordon, this is something he could do?
Or he could. Or, I think he could rock.
Or yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like I said.
The process, I think he might be familiar with the school.
Yeah, when schools go up for ban, this is what they do, there's that.
I know, I know, but I bet they pay a lot of money for that too.
Sure.
Yeah, they probably.
Well, they are smaller.
Six figures.
Yeah.
With a bargain based price.
I do think it's worth asking, so will Jim Hayden. He writes every week for the commercial record.
That's fine too. I think that's a good one.
And he's used to be the editor of the.
Yeah.
He was at Holland Sentinel for years.
Yeah, we did talk to a political consultant who worked on the Lake Town bonds, but I mean. They pay money, they, you know, it costs money.
Right, I'm, I'm just thinking, maybe we could get one press release for a couple thousand dollars or, or all of that, so much, yeah.
I guess the other thing to do, because timing is important, and if we can't get it together and we're saying, you know, John doesn't have the bandwidth to do it, you don't, there's so many other things. Is do we just? Do an e-blast and do something on social media directing people to this document, it's all there, you know, like then if we have people like. What, I didn't know about this, or where's this information, it's all there, you just have to read all seventeen pages, you know, it's not ideal.
It's not ideal.
But.
And it's minimal, I mean, the press, it's gotta be in the paper.
Why does it have to be in the paper?
There's a lot, that's a lot of people read the paper, that more people read the paper, then go to get our e-blast.
But it could still be. It could be an advertisement directing them to the. Website.
Hmm.
You know, I don't know, I'm just saying, like, if we. Come up with nothing and it's a plan B, like if we can't find somebody to put together a nice press release, really professional, getting ahead of it. This is at least a way to disseminate the information. And people to have access to and be alerted to it.
It's a step.
It's a step.
Daniel, do you have a preference for how you would like to do it?
Um. No.
Okay.
I mean, I have to figure, I'll have to figure it out. Yeah, I mean, I do think it's probably important to have a press release, timing is important, because you don't want, I mean, I almost feel like it should go out. During the bidding process, which is really like now. Because you want people to know ahead of time. That, you know, that. You know, this went out and if there is a, there aren't many local commercial contractors, there are some in the Holland area and it's going out in the Holland Sentinel. Um, but you do wanna at least, you want the public to know that the project was made public. And that the plans are publicly available, if anybody does wanna bid on them, cause that's the other component, that it's not just. The cost of the project or the scope of the project, it's also being transparent and giving local people an opportunity to. Know about the project and to contact Abba Marsh if they're interested in bidding on it.
Well, is Elliot Stram's wife a writer?
She's done grants, I know that.
Yeah, she's done grants.
Well, she does a promotion for like the wineries.
But I don't know about.
Right, that's what she.
But beyond that, I'm not sure.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think of her as a writer.
I didn't know she was these.
This was a thought.
Well, you're right, I mean, it says something, we, we should have this ready like now.
Yeah.
But that doesn't mean. We shouldn't try to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think if you don't. Take the lead and do a press release, whether it's picked up or not, there's no guarantee with Scott, Holland Sentinel. Other, but if we don't, it looks, I think it looks like we're kinda trying to slip it through.
Yeah.
So what's the plan?
Well, I'm gonna call Jim Hayden.
And I think reaching out to Gordon is the good idea, I, I feel like there's gonna be other, like, who does?
Yeah.
Um. I'm just thinking about other things, like, when, you know, the library had, was up for like, you know. Um, a milledger or whatever, who did their stuff?
A lot of, I mean, like, like when I talked to Lake Town, Lake Town hired a political consultant to do all the work for them, like it's, like, it's not heat wheels.
That, but like they're. That's really good. This is just a press release though, it's not like these fancy slideshow rooms.
I know.
And actually, of course, obviously, it's like, so.
But yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying it was like a part of a larger campaign.
Of course, too.
Who, who?
Father Corey.
No.
Who's pitched, well, cause he, but he writes a column every week.
I know he does.
And he gets it.
He was in some.
To be, to be honest.
Bethel is in the paper every week because Jim Hayden sends it to them.
Yeah.
We hardly get covered any. Locally, we get more coverage from Holland than our own paper, which is too bad, cause we do a lot of great stuff, but that's because someone hands it to them.
Yeah. Yeah. To, to be honest, I fear that. Looking for, to hire someone is gonna make more work, because we have to identify someone, we have to give them the information, we have to work them through the project, I'm almost like inclined to say. Like Brenda or Becky, sit down with me and Morgan, we'll go through it, we'll say what we like, what we don't like, what people really need to know, we'll organize it and then we'll come up with a rough draft and then. Go from there.
I was trying to think of too, how to get it off your plate, that doesn't take off your plate.
I know. But I don't think the other one takes off my plate either.
It sort of gives it to Morgan though, if we would spend the time and I'm helping him do it.
But if it's someone like Jim, he can sit down individually with three, however many of us.
Yeah.
She'll dump the information.
Yeah.
And he might not be able to.
He may not be able to, that's the thing, you have to contact someone, you have to come with a cause, you have to.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to remove you as much as possible.
I know, I'm just saying that like I can see it, I can see it unfolding and I, I, I see it as more work. Than just getting a board member, getting Morgan, getting myself sitting down, working, working through it once and.
I think that's, that's like more work.
Morgan's an English major, you know, and a writer, yes.
Yeah, and a writer.
Yeah. She's a writer.
This is her.
Yeah.
And she's had a lot of experience in journalism too, actually.
Yeah.
He does, she's worked for a newspaper for four years.
Yeah. And I say less, and, and there's no additional cost here, which I know.
And there's no additional cost, and I actually think, I'm confident we get a better product too, because I don't, I don't know Jim Hayden's writing and he doesn't know our personality.
Most pressure.
I just think that we could do a better job.
And then you have oversight.
And then we have oversight, so.
Well, we would either way.
Yeah.
I would be, it, you know, I, I wonder if you just gave her this and had her. Play around with it, pull out.
Like have her take a stab at it first.
But, uh, yes, and I'd be. More than happy to meet with her, but it can't be before Thanksgiving, I think we're not.
It can't be before, okay, let me, let me talk to Morgan.
Before what?
Thanksgiving is next week.
And.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah, there's no way I can do it before.
I'll talk to Morgan and figure out a game plan, and if, if we decide after like. Sitting down and trying to take a first stab at it, that it's not gonna work, we'll know pretty, I think we'll know fairly quickly if it's gonna work or it's not, and if it's not, then we'll start reaching out to.
Yeah.
Individuals who might be able to write it for us.
Right, and then maybe you could give her the key parts of your thing.
Yeah, I'll just give her the document.
Okay.
Do you wanna forward it to us, cause it's easier to copy and paste?
Yeah.
Okay.
His, he's.
You already have it, but I'll send it, I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, I wonder. I think we did send it one term ago, but.
Oh, the historical timing, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, did you include in there that the furniture was purchased in the late nineteen, or nineteen seventies?
Yes.
Oh, whatever.
Yes, I think it was eighty-four, but. That's still a long time ago.
Um.
That's why it's all falling apart.
Do you know, I think I probably have some availability for like, you know.
Okay.
Um, I, Brenda does not till after Thanksgiving, like he's leaving his taxes, of course he's.
I'll help.
But I can. Sit down and work.
Yeah, cause I feel like when you get a few people just down in a room, like, it actually can go faster, because then you, you get feedback like, oh, I really wanted to know this, you're like, oh, I didn't think about that and.
Yeah. Right, right.
Just like, and then the writing can get filled in, but like a lot of it is like the organization of the material, like what goes first, what goes second, to have the most impact.
There is value to having a back and forth too, because she's doing it, she can say.
Oh, yeah.
She'll blah blah blah, and you'll say la la la, you know.
Exactly.
Yes.
And then we'll work, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I, I'd like to see what she could come up with. Without help at first, I mean, you guys, if you wanna meet once, but again, otherwise. You're just gonna be fielding a ton of questions, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
However, we can organize it, so.
Right, I think that's done with that, right?
All right.
So we can move on to.
We have to new business ID, our power resolution.
Can you wanna talk about this?
Sure, we kind of already did, but in the packet, there is a sample resolution that, uh, the manager Alma did, I've seen up several others. Basically, they're all worded, they're worded the same, except obviously changing the names, and just to revisit what we talked about a few minutes ago. My recommendation is that we have a resolution drawn up for Sagatuck Township. That states under public utility, infrastructure, or maybe we change the heading, so it's not just utility, but we, as we discussed. Blue Star Drain, ten thousand dollars. Ordinance review process, eighty thousand, building remodel, two hundred sixty-two thousand. That totals the three hundred fifty-two thousand that we received from the US Treasury, and then we can vote to approve that at the December. Cause it's, as I said last week or whatever. It's strongly recommended that we do a resolution.
Yeah.
Who strongly recommends it?
MMTA.
MMTA, so the Treasury Department. Treasury Association?
Yeah.
Treasury.
And that's why this is, you know, we have a list served, and I got, you know.
Yeah.
Dozens of responses, because everyone's been moving, and I just think it's smart. Keeps us in line.
Oh, John, I have a question for you, do we, um, say the two hundred sixty-two thousand plus interest? Where do we add the plus interest to?
I think at this point, we just address what we received.
Okay.
Till I get further clarification.
I think the interest we just keep, they don't take that back.
I do too.
Okay.
I do too, no, I've heard people say that.
That's right.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I checked that this morning, but all. The receipts, the receipts they have when the money came in from the beds, and that was the exact amount.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I keep saying, I've been saying three fifty-four, I think that's because when I do the treasure, uh, the finance report, I include the interest, so this is what we got along the same.
Right, of course. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so. We'll just. Get this fashioned.
See, okay, so I'm gonna say something somewhat unpopular, don't get mad at me, but I do think that this should come from treasure department. Because it's coming as a recommendation from the Treasurers Association, cause I feel like this is gonna be another thing I work on.
Oh, I, oh, I'm happy to.
Okay.
No, I offered to.
Okay, that's fine, as long as.
It's a work ethic.
Okay, as long as we know who's responsible for it, I.
Right, yeah, what I was gonna suggest, I'll take a stab and then, cause Lori does most of the resolutions to make sure it looks like ours.
And I can forward it when it's done to Nick to just give a green, like, cause that's what I normally do, just to give the stamp, but as long as we know who's doing what, okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, yeah, no, that is never.
Good, I don't think that, it sounds like we have, no, you don't seek any action, I mean, you have a bit of a.
I think we're good.
No, no.
Well, I'm just having.
Yeah, we'll vote when it comes to.
Is there any downside?
To.
Doing the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can be in words.
If you have, if we had to make a change, but it's not.
If it, it means give it, you can, you can make.
Yeah.
You can do something else.
We could not, yeah, we could.
You can modify it, or amend it, or whatever.
But I just. No, yeah.
And I think, once we start spending the money, it's gonna go pretty quick like that.
Yes.
And I've already talked to Daniel, I think I should be moving some of that money out of my class already. Cause we have paid several bills. Right, to both the ordinance guy and to Alba Marsh. It's not a huge number yet, but.
Yeah. But it can start coming out of our, if you want.
Let's have it in the bank, right, exactly, and we talked to the coordinator about that too.
That was me, I like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Um, moving on to, um, new business. Item E, manager, managers.
This. Yeah, and this doesn't have to be a long conversation, but I've just started because. You know, I, I kinda feel bad, cause I asked for the six month performance evaluation, but we don't really, I mean, we do have a performance evaluation for employees.
Right.
But we don't really have one set up for a manager.
Yeah. Good point.
And I started thinking about it, and you know, a lot of communities do, you know, a more detailed process, because. It's also great for strategic planning, because it forces the board or the council to start thinking, well, what are the important qualities? That we would like to see in a manager, what are we, you know, what are the standards or the criteria with, that we're evaluating them against? And then it caught, you know, it allows the whole board to participate in the process, this is a guide I found. Online and I liked it because it's a little, it's more of a guide as opposed to this is the specific process, so. We're approximately two months out from my annual, from my anniversary, which is coming up fast.
Wow, wow.
So I thought I would just kind of put this in your laps as something that maybe we don't have something as detailed as all of this, but. Maybe it's something that we, you know, we integrate aspects of in, like especially I like the idea of, um. You know, thinking about the criteria that you want included in my performance evaluation. Um, what are the kinds of qualities you're looking for in a manager? Because then that sets the stage going forward, like if you have a, you know, it's a different board, it's a different manager, but like what are the, what are the core values of the board? And what are they looking for in their manager, and then I think that also helps in the hiring process, like. This is, you know, these are the things that we're looking for in whoever gets put into this position, so. I just kinda wanted to drop it in your lap, so you could see that it can be a detailed process that we might wanna think about. Integrating aspects into the performance evaluation of the manager, because it is a unique role. And it does really involve the interaction between the manager and the board. And thinking about that relationship, thinking about. What you're looking for in a future manager, or what you're looking for in me, which will help me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, move, you know, move forward and set my own priorities. Which will help me, you know, move, you know, move forward and set my own priorities and goals. Does that kind of make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I did skim this, I didn't really.
It's a lot. Yeah.
I just, is there any mention or reference in here to the concept of three hundred sixty-degree reviews?
What is a three hundred and sixty-degree review?
That's where it's not just top-down.
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
So, Lori would review you.
Yeah.
You don't really have peers, but I mean, in a company, peers, but you know, I lived under a three sixty world for dozens of years.
I did. Yeah.
It's a lot of work, but it's also helpful.
Yeah.
Especially. Staff, staff up.
But staff, but usually also applies to, we're not a huge place with all these other departments. But it could be the fire chief, it could be, uh, uh, Daryl. It could, yeah, Kelly, it could be, there's the people that you deal with, could even be Avon Marsh, could be, I'm just, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Well, so, that's sort of the list, like when we were interviewing for this position.
Yeah.
And Abby and I called people, like.
Yes.
The chief.
Yeah, yeah.
To talk about, you know.
Because she was the chair of a planning committee.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
She did.
Oh, we did beat it up.
Um. Yeah, so I read this too, I kinda gave it a lot of thought, I, I think what struck me in here and what I've always felt is that. Your goals are not the township goals, and we have to be careful of that when you're reviewed. Your goals are to implement and sustain and take on the township goals, but your goals, it's not your job to represent. When we have a strategic plan and say, this is our goal.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't become your goal, and we have to be careful of that. That it's, it's, and you know, in short language, people call it the dumping syndrome. Because we have this goal, I will, you know, give it to Daniel, put it or whoever, so I think that struck me and I thought. Are we asking for a behavioral? Um, analysis, I mean, or a review, is it more of a behavioral review, like? How do you represent the township in the community and what specific, um, boards have you represented the township in, what new ones? And I mean, that would be a question, I mean, as I was, and I just kept thinking of all these questions. It could be part of it, but if we don't have your established goals first.
Mm-hmm.
It would be really difficult to evaluate you on your performance, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So I think you should be evaluated on how you provide feedback to your employees. I think that's really important, but they should be able to evaluate how that feedback is given to them too, and how it makes them feel.
Mm-hmm.
You know, those are our behavioral kind of things, and I think based on our history, those are important questions. To address when reviewing someone, I don't know if that makes sense, but, um. And then looking at more operational stuff, you know, tell us about the leadership you've provided and, uh, maybe the building remodel. And, and things that you have actually taken leadership in, that, that's really important too, so. I don't know, I just was reading this and thought, I can come up with a ton of questions, but. I, I do feel it's more of a behavioral review than a, a specific goal review, does that make sense?
Well, I kinda like it.
Township goal review.
Your friend, you go.
I was just gonna say, which comes first? Uh, the goals versus his goals?
Right.
Or what we review? Yeah, or the goals that we, I don't, I've always wondered this, I was in such a narrow scope of a job.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, I understand why they had to do, you knew exactly what goals you needed to set. In Daniel's case, this, the scope of this job is so huge, I don't know, I.
Right.
I'm not sure if he should, yeah, cuz I've thought about this a lot, should he do his goals first? And then measure against those or vice versa, you know, you want stuff.
Really, towards the end, yeah.
You didn't lose the end, but.
The likes of the.
Well, you know, it's like, it's common practice and review process. To have the first, the re, the person you're reviewing set goals for themselves. That's all, but this really is his first annual, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So how does that work exactly, do? I mean, he could set any goals he wanted, and then we could review them against that, or. We establish them, is that what you mean?
No, we would just be measuring them on, you know, something like this, or what we have.
Yeah.
And then he would set goals for the coming year, right? How I would.
Yeah, and then you would measure.
Right, then you would evaluate it.
Yeah.
I think we're agreeing, cuz I was thinking, cuz I know you had suggested this more than once, but. I don't, I didn't see why in this first case.
Mm-hmm.
You'd be presenting goals.
Okay.
I think that would be more like. Let's evaluate how, how you've done in this whole new job, whole new environment, like years behind this. Then, that would help feed into suggesting goals for yourself. And then I think we would review those too, so they are integrated, cuz there's gotta be some integration to the strategic goals.
Some relationship.
Not necessarily.
Direct.
Yeah, line by line the same.
Yeah.
And you're, I would imagine you're gonna have some goals for yourself that we haven't even thought of.
Yeah.
But that would, it's good, informative for us to know that, but I think, I don't think you have to worry about doing that first. I, and people are all saying that, but maybe not.
I'm, I've not even looked at your job description, and that was the expectations we have for you for now.
That's true, yeah.
If your job description listed things, and if it said provide leadership to the community. As the Saga Town Township manager, then the question to you would be, describe the initiatives you have taken to provide leadership.
Mm-hmm.
To teams within the community, do you know what I mean?
I don't know that we have a job description.
I don't know if there is a job description.
Oh, we did, we were in a very big time crunch.
Well, we were, well, it's very true.
Well, we had, Daniel, come on, and.
Yes.
It brought an interest in helping in our time of need.
Well, that's why I think it's possible.
So then we needed to come up with some advertisements, so I think Johnny kind of.
Yeah, but it's posted, we, yeah, posted.
Right, 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 but it was brief.
Okay.
Yeah, it was brief.
So we don't have one.
Hmm.
Well, that would be a good call, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have expectations, yeah, for myself, and I know that you all have expectations, and it's, I, I kinda like this collaborative process of like.
Talking about it.
Talking it, yeah, talking about it and bringing it all out, and then kind of coming to a shared vision.
One goal for you could be to fashion a draft job this week.
I could do that.
Because you know things we don't.
Or what I think.
And then we could weigh back and say, well, that really.
Yeah.
You don't need to focus on that, but I don't.
Yeah, I could tell you about my job, you know, what I, you know.
Yeah, you can tell us what you do, and you do tell us what you.
And I do tell you what I do.
We do have that, I agree.
Okay, sorry, I interrupted you, you do move. Um. Here's how I feel about this, um, you're doing a great job, I think pretty much, actually, everyone knows that, yeah, or feels that way, shares that. Um, I hate, I love evaluations, because the way I was taught is, you know. It's just the time to really get together to go, whatever tool you use, you know, whether it's this one, the evaluation tool, or the one that we have been using. I always have to modify mine a little bit, like what it's asking, like, does this fit in this category or this one, every tool that I've used has been that way. Um, and you just write the most in the sections that are in the most need or whatever. So I'm just, I don't wanna make it complicated, I think if you make too many goals, they get lost, and they become meaningless. And I don't want Daniel to now have to write up his own job description, like it, it's, we've been without one for a year and everything's been fine, and it can wait. Until a couple months from now if it needs to, in my opinion. Um, it should be done, we should have a job description for everyone on file, but it's not like something that needs to happen right now, um. Oh, I just don't want this to become more complicated than.
I think what you're saying is we can evaluate Daniel right now without the job.
Yes, thank you.
Good point.
And with this tool, or with the tool we have, exactly, thank you for summing that up.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Also, um, in the past, I like, I, partly because my boss was great, had great vision, but didn't like, just.
It can work.
Talk, you know, so he would have, and I think at the county it was done this way. We did our self-evaluations, I said, Donald, my evaluation, I did all the writing, I did all the scoring.
Mm-hmm.
And very rarely did the people that were conducting the evaluation say, we take exception with that, that you give yourself a five, and that, sometimes it happened, and then it was worked out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm really, for us, it worked really well. Um, but I think I did do like, um, in the times that we've filled them out as a board, um, hearing everybody else's feedback. I really appreciated the self-evaluation, because sometimes you get way more than. God, you'd expect, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
That's all, just might do sense. And you two are.
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I would suggest those, since we, we were, we were put in charge of the review committee.
Yes, yeah, we get.
For a six-month.
Yeah.
Seems like we're switching to annual, so everyone should be doing, yeah.
Hmm.
As we've done in the past, and. I think for ease, maybe we do this first one with the form we already have.
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah, but look, this one over.
Well, we can check.
The old one, yeah. I like the old one, there's certain things, products that I don't like, but I think you can just.
Ignore them.
Right, thank you.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And if that makes it easier. It's subjective enough that you could be like, oh, I wanna talk about this, so I'm gonna talk about it in this area.
Mm-hmm.
Like.
And then we always did that chart, so you put those together, we did the charts of everyone's. Cindy.
Okay.
So you would. We probably have a spreadsheet.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if we agree to move in that direction, I mean, it starts now. We don't have to wait till whatever the date is.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would potentially, if you were agreeable to it, go over that in closed session, have your review session, correct?
Sure.
At his request.
That, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the, I like the collaborative.
But extending it.
And, and I would say, if, if there are certain aspects or questions here that you or you think.
Okay, yeah.
Are fabulous and we don't have, we can edit, format, but we do have a form that we've all been familiar with.
And, yeah.
But it can be tweaked.
Yeah, mostly, like, and there's kind of some catchall areas, you know, like you feel strongly about like.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I don't like how Daniel answers the phone, you know, you kind of, you can like to. Find an area where that would fit. Backing when.
I made the opposite of that comment, I didn't stop the review once.
I think that reviews are meant to be very positive.
Yes.
And, and, um, so when you said I don't like, I thought, oh, no, I would never put that in a review ever, but, um, they're meant to be positive. And inspiring, and, um, lead someone off on a good path.
Yeah, right.
So you know.
Good about themselves, I, I.
Put things in that are working.
I would say things that can be improved.
That need to be improved. Yeah.
But not things that are not working, things that can be.
Cuz there are some negative behaviors that can stress.
I have a whole book on negative behaviors that I found yesterday, and I'll bring it.
Alright, take your.
Well, that's what you do when you're starting, when you're in the discipline.
It's just a great, very process, and you're.
And I'm not.
Doing well with that, well, then.
For you.
In the past.
Education for individuals.
Yes, negative things.
But I, I agree that for continuity, we should keep the same review process, maybe improve on it for now. If you have some additional questions and ways to improve it, but I do think on the whole, it's meant to be inspiring and, um. I mean, we know we already are going into a review that's gonna be very positive. I mean, we're really fortunate, but in the future, it may not be that way, so we don't wanna recreate a review because of problem. In the future, you know, so it has to be.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if that makes sense, and, I mean, I'm happy to look at things in the future too, but not right now.
No.
I don't know.
Okay, I think that for the most part, it sounds like we have some direction with this, is, um. We can email out those blank fillable, um, evaluation forums, get started on that, and then potentially we would be, when's your anniversary?
January seventeenth, so it's like two months out.
So we could schedule a special meeting for January.
Mm-hmm.
That works.
We should be prepared.
Mm-hmm. Could, you, I think, have it the handiest, and I know you've sent it to me, but would you mind sending it to me again, the original?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The blank one, yeah. I know exactly where it is.
Can you send it to her?
Of course.
And then with instructions, when they're done with them, send.
Oh, okay.
What would you like, and Abby's like, what would you like?
And then when the special meeting's.
Yeah, let's, we don't know like this.
But early January.
Because once Cindy received all that information, kind of put him in that big spreadsheet, I remember they were on a big piece of paper, like, the, uh, whatever size that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, then did she give those back out to everybody at, like, at least a week before the meeting?
Okay.
Oh, the chart or the summary thing?
The chart.
I honestly don't know.
I think we got to, at least a week.
Yeah, we, you couldn't just digest it on the spot.
Right, right, right.
And there were sample comments. We should just look for the last time.
So I'd like, um, by, right, while it's the.
I have to get out my phone if I'm booking somewhere.
Let's do January first.
I'll just get the information to Abby by January one.
First.
Got it.
Yeah, that's.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question relative to the annual review? Oh, we get an update from Daniel every week about what he accomplishes every week.
Right.
How do we use that in the review? I mean, I think it's something we have to think about, I save them all, and I put them in a folder, and I read them all.
Every manager under us has done that.
Okay, uh, but because we've done that, doesn't.
Every week, it was more like monthly, but it's.
Yeah, I'm just not sure, I mean, do we agree that it has to be done weekly?
I thought about that.
I have too.
I'm fine with that, with bi-week.
I'm fine with monthly even, but, um.
Bi-week is a good.
I asked Daniel the other day, I was just curious, cuz it does, weekly seems like a lot.
Take time.
But I asked him if it helps him when it comes to the board meeting, he's got all of those, he's got those four manager reports to draw from when he does his report. For us. Um, uh, for the board, for the board meeting, but I will certainly would be comfortable with every other week, I just.
What would you feel comfortable with, I guess is the question.
I think that, there's, I think there's only been one time I did a bi-weekly, because we had like a short week. I think that I'm okay with just having, if you're okay with it, the flexibility of saying, I think that this deserves. A report at the end of the week, or I think that a two-week report is appropriate in this case.
That's right.
I agree.
Cuz more often than not, I'm gonna go with the week, but I think there's some cases where it feels more natural to do two weeks. And then to just be able to have the flexibility to make that judgment.
I do love them, but I also. I can see how much work goes in.
They're a lot of work, yeah, but it did help me reflect, and then I have memorialized, you know, what the status of the project is and what the project is, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
So it is, I mean, they are helpful to have.
Okay.
And then it doesn't have to be, the actual review doesn't have to be like. After your hire date, it could be just in that window.
Yeah, in that window.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so.
Yeah.
Well, it could be tacked on the board.
But you could do it ahead of the board.
But you would go in the closed session?
Yeah.
Yeah. But that I, that would probably mean it wouldn't happen so that.
And if we have a packed agenda, I don't want to, so, yeah, feel rushed.
I think the value is in scheduling it separately.
I do too.
I, I think that you need to appreciate the review and the time.
I agree.
And not be pushed to be doing something else too.
As far as the three sixty thing, John and Brenda, you guys have talked about it. Um, do we feel comfortable just kind of doing that informally, yes, right now, in this state?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
What, what?
We haven't.
How, what, what does that mean, sorry?
We haven't, and I don't see, foresee us, anybody having the capacity right now to like formalize a three sixty process. But does that prevent us from just having a conversation with Morgan, like, how are you experiencing?
Yeah.
Daniel as a leader, you know, is there anything you'd like to contribute to, you know, when he's having his review, is there any, you know, is, is anybody opposed to that type of? You know, is there anything you'd like to contribute to, you know, when he's having his review, is there any, you know, is is anybody opposed to that type of?
I would only suggest that that question come from one person versus each one of us.
Oh, no, we should.
We should say who's gonna ask her, and I think the way you said that is perfect, maybe. You would be the person to answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't include Cindy.
Yes.
I would ask Cindy too.
I'm willing to.
If you don't mind, I think.
Laurie.
Would be perfect.
Laurie, but I think Laurie.
Laurie, absolutely.
Cause yeah, it's a conversation that could.
Lanay.
Yeah. So do you wanna do all four of those, Ab?
If you were anyone else that's willing to take some of those on, I'd be great.
I'd be happy to take on one or two of them. You just tell me who.
I'll just. I'll take um Cindy and Laurie, you want Lanay and Morgan, I talked to Lanay last time too, so.
Okay, we just need to have the same question.
I'm just gonna be open and then.
My recommendation is. Think this is off of the review form.
I will.
Yes, right?
I'll do Lanay and. Okay, perfect.
I'd be happy to do Greg, just because I hear every time I talk to him.
That's a good community.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not talking to Daryl yet, I did that once.
He likes us now.
Yeah, he does.
He likes you.
Yeah, he wasn't very excited in the beginning. Well.
Okay, perfect.
I always think that cause she says he likes him now, he won him over, but he was a top interview.
Okay, good, and then. If I think of anyone else too, I'll I'll think about that.
Sure, you can always just include it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good, and I mean. Do we wanna put that on December's um? Board meeting to set a date for that?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I think that gives us a. A start. Starting that we'll formalize that at the. Okay, anything else regarding the manager performance review process? All right, well, that brings us to open board comments. Anyone online? No, you're, they're not on the board. We're not quite public.
No.
I'm sorry. Doing so great on our time. Um. Perfect. Brenda, did you have anything?
No, I'm not that I can say that.
Say anything?
Looking forward to a very positive review.
Uh, the only thing I. Will bring up, I think that might be important for us in the future is that we should have. A way of um maybe documenting instances like um things that happen, be it. If somebody falls or if. There's a bad phone call that comes in, specific incidences, like um we have had a lot of mail issues. Between clerk and assessor and some stuff, so I, I mean, we always call them incident reports, but um. There are some things like that, we had a fall the other day and um I thought, oh, we we should be documenting that just in case. On site for a better project and.
Oh, I mean.
Yeah, and so um. We had an irate phone call one day, I mean, those things would probably be best served documented. So that as a small group, we can discuss it in terms of leaning towards best practice. And that's where I'm always going, how could we be better? How could I make your day better? How can I make anybody's day better? What could we do to improve the practice we have today? And that's what incident reports or occurrence reports or whatever you wanna call them do, so I think in the future, that's something. I'd like to look at it if you think that's important and I bring you that a form that would kind of look at that. If does that make sense, or you just wanna say, ah, we don't need it.
I feel like this has been so few, you can count on one hand.
I think there's been quite a few, I do, I I asked.
What were the assessor mail issues?
Um, they would prefer to open their own mail, um they want the the envelope stamped as to.
They can't open their own mail when they're only here twice a month.
They would like to open it, they're getting it opened for them. They would like to open it and have um Morgan stamp the data on it as when.
That would stop the whole process of.
And who responds to their mail?
Their mail goes to Morgan, as I said earlier. And she can deal with a lot of the updating.
What they, the all I know is they said we've asked her for the envelope, when did it come in? The envelopes are thrown away, they don't have it.
Why has no one brought this up?
I I don't know, I'm not.
I'm just.
I'm saying that in.
The envelope should be attached to.
Would be helpful. Um, I brought up the voting. Piece because we had ballot open in August and this last time and. Um, I didn't know how to respond to it as a new clerk, so I asked the Board of Elections and they said. Well, how did it get open? I explained to them it was not, you know, it was an accident, but they said. Elected officials shouldn't be getting the mail. Should be non-elected people because that's best practice, and I said, okay, and um. So that was one thing, but I mean, I could go in, let's see, Lori gave me a whole list of stuff, but. I was in the office when somebody called and they were pretty irate and. It became kind of a big deal in the office and I thought, wait a minute, we need to understand. That there's a better way to respond and probably get the manager involved, but but it needs to be talked out, so. It doesn't happen again. Um. If somebody falls, you don't want somebody to come back in three weeks and say. I have to go in and get an x-ray and we have no documentation of it for our insurance, we need to have that. And so those are things, I'm just. There's other things, but that's just kind of a first attempt. At least we would have the information, we could talk about it and say, how could we improve this process? And that would be helpful.
Okay, so. Same as. Just go. To me, it sounds like the mail. Is a different issue than an occurrence report, to me, I'm structuring it in my brains, it is just like the the mail. Um, not policy, but just the the way mail is handled and distributed and opened or not opened, just needs to. Be revisited and everybody needs to find a. A. Process that everybody's agreeable to, and I would hope that people could do that, like this shouldn't be that difficult, I'm sorry, I don't. But it just shouldn't, so uh to me, that is a different um. Issue than the occurrence report, and I do definitely see the value in an occurrence or an incident report, I know we have those at the county. And it just takes away our fuzzy memories sometimes and this person's experience of it and this person's experience. Who um so I commend you for thinking about that and it. Um, who in your mind would you see filling out the occurrence report and then what do you do with them? How do they get reviewed after that?
Well, I think that's something. That we would have to decide, but anyone could fill out an occurrence report. Because they would be aware of an occurrence, anyone could fill it out, if there's. A strange person trying to get into the building or just, I mean, I'm being kind of. I think out there on that, but it could be, somebody might be spray painting the building and or somebody might be taking something. Our bench or something, that's an occurrence, of course, you'd call nine one one for that, but um. I don't, I mean, maybe we wouldn't have a lot, but it would be whoever noticed it, whoever it happened to, opening personal mail. To me is still an occurrence, if somebody opens my mail and it's a personal letter to me or a card, I don't like that, I. I I would rather open my own mail and so would.
Well, I don't think that happens.
It happened to me. Well, my card, I have two that.
Cause usually it doesn't happen. And I did wanna point out back to the assessor question, cause again, we include assessors, I talk to them all the time, I've never heard of people about this. At about half of the. Mail that comes in addressed to the assessor from title. Which have a property transfer affidavit, which they need to deal with, at least half over the course of the year include a property tax payoff. So I'm gonna send a check down to Three Rivers, that's for me, that's supposed to go into the bank within forty-eight hours. That's preferred law, I I don't understand that.
Well, the process you would have to work out with them, I mean, I'm not here to tell you how.
No, you're not, and I just, this one is obviously very personal, it would shut down our tax receipt system.
Sure.
She's here twice a month, so that's what you wanna see happen.
That's not what I want to see, I'm just saying that they have some issues with it.
Then why don't they speak up? I think, are you proud of them? What are you talking about? Like I said, I talk to them all the time.
I.
Had a relationship with Kyle all the time, it's kind of normal.
What I'm hearing is we need a policy about who opens the mail and what they do with it, because as you're all talking. In the variety of jobs I was at college. Um. My mail was never open, because when I was doing grants, everything was dated. Uh. It was so important that I processed it, I had to stamp everything, when I worked on scholarships, it was the same thing now. Things have changed electronically nowadays, where a lot of that kind of stuff is done electronically, but. Mail's important, and in in my case at the college. It could generate unbelievable losses, so. Uh, what I'm hearing is we need. We've really, it's something we have not ever thought, I have not thought about it.
Well, we have a, it's not.
Well, we need.
We have a practice that has worked.
Well, I know, but maybe we need to look at best practices. And. Um.
Is there a way we could do it better, and I would say that for for everything, we have to think about that, on Saturday of the election day, we were here. Saturday prior to the election, we were working, Lori and I came in, we were both here before eight. Um. The the day before that was the last day that we could mail out ballots. That was the last day that requests could come into us to mail out ballots. For some reason, we went and looked in the mailbox out there and there were requests for ballots too. And I was like, oh my god, no one looked in the mailbox on Friday.
Well, that's, mail comes later than boxes checked.
Well, if we still probably, I would have.
Issue, one of the clerk people should have checked the mailbox.
We assumed the mail had been checked and we were.
That's why you had a key to go Saturday.
We're not talking about downtown, we're talking about the mail.
I am too. Just explain, they often come later in the day, so the mail that I pick up at the box usually is the of the day before.
Well, so we did not look at the mail at the street at four o'clock, which I guess. You know, if I know that we're supposed to look for the mail.
Anything there was a application?
Yeah.
Cause I've never seen one come there.
Somebody.
I.
Somewhere in my town.
They followed it, but they post up.
So. We were like, oh my god, and we logged it into the system that it came the Friday because it did. And you know, it's just another mail issue, I ended up driving. The ballots to those people and delivering them personally. And I made, you know, an exception. Uh, you know, to the decision in doing it on Saturday morning. Because we needed to. We had to account for that. But I mean, it's just one of the. I, it's not just the mail, I I don't mean to say it's just the mail, there are things that. Could occur that we should just track, it's not meant to be punitive, it's meant to be make us better.
Even during elections, I had. Um. On a couple of different occasions, people get angry and start yelling, and to me, that's like something I want, it wasn't to the threshold of calling the police. But you want, you know, who was present, in case you need to go back and get, take some interviews and get, you need to know. You know, what time of day it was, what vehicle they were driving, who it was, if you know. Um, just if it's out of the ordinary, if it just unsettles you enough to be like, okay, this is different, this is something people might have questions on later. So, um. So, hold on.
We had that with a poll challenger too, that finally I had to say.
Yeah.
Stop, put your phone away, sit down, stop asking me those.
And that might be a separate form for elections, two things though, if I can make a. Suggestion. Um, I'm hearing from. Becky, Brenda, John regarding mail. Um, I haven't really heard a lot from Daniel, I'm not in the office, I don't understand the flow, sounds like the assessors have said some things not directly to John, which I think probably would have been the best, but. It's just however that played out is fine, we. It's, we'll deal with that, um. Would it make most sense for. You, Daniel, to come up with a process, could people live with that? And just write it out, it's done, here's how the mail gets.
I think.
And if people have problems, they come to you.
I think, yeah, I I kind of think that that's the best path forward, like I'm thinking, and I I did mention to John the other day, and I may have mentioned to Becky. Too, that I had, you know, we should have a staff meeting, we have not had just like a formal staff meeting because. Like, you know, the other day I was a little frustrated, cause the garbage and recycling were full and air waste is there, so I'm. You know, waving down the guy to grab the garbage to put it, you know, and you know, I'm also thinking like. Yeah, I'm frustrated, but do we have a system? No. Like, who who is responsible for this? Who is responsible for taking out the recycling? Who is responsible for the dishes? So. There are a lot of different, the mail is a component of that, but um. You know, and and there has been a lot of change in the office over the last ten months. So I think it is worthwhile to have staff sit down and and talk about what's working. What are our challenges and just clarify clearly a mail policy, I would like a garbage and recycling policy, I would like, you know. Not a policy, but like a schedule, so we understand who is responsible for what.
Yeah.
Um, so that we can, you know, avoid. Things that frustrate, you know, individual staff members and then. There's no productive way to express that frustration. So like, if somebody is accountable for taking out the garbage, it's not taken out, we can address it. So I I do think, unless you think the mail policy rises to the level of of you want the board to approve it.
I think I'm happy if you.
Yeah, I don't.
Figure out how it should be, but um, you know, I I think when we talked about, well, I was in this weekend. For something, um, and it was awfully cold in here, so when I talked to Lori Monday morning. I said, check the temperature in this room, it was forty-five. The air.
I think you're, that, that's not a policy.
No, it's not a policy, but I would be happy.
Air conditioning got turned on by mistake.
Okay.
And it was remedied. I'm religious about Friday turning all the thermostats down to save us money.
Okay.
Constellation.
No, I believe you, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying, I don't know how to or what the heat is supposed to be regulated at, so. I didn't touch it.
But it's not a policy.
No, and I almost.
Sense that people work out.
I almost texted you and said.
It's so easy, I'll show you how to do it.
I love it. I was gonna text you and then I thought, no, don't interrupt, John, it's his day off. And.
And you don't need to come in on the weekend. You're right.
I know, well. Can't remember why I had to.
Sure you can.
We do, we do have challenges with that one, but yeah, I don't know how it was turned out by mistake.
Use it, so I don't touch it, but.
Yeah.
It's.
Nor the last person will, I always look at that one, I always look at the other one.
Yeah.
But we can review that with everybody and just go over it, I mean, that's an easy thing to do.
We have, that's the newest one and it's so easy.
Yeah.
It probably is.
Can it be on a schedule?
No, well, I mean.
I think that, you know.
Mine's believable. We. Mine is set to go down to a certain.
I don't think we need that this week, some days all of a sudden we have the door open because it's warm.
Oh, I know.
So. The man, the manual just seems so much more common sense, and we all know how to, well, most of us know how to do it.
I'm hoping with the new build, it helps, the problem is that that side of the building. Is a different temperature than where we are now, so it could feel cool here and blistering hot there. And when you're having meetings, you set that to get a certain temperature here and it, so it's. Like in the board meeting, like, we can feel comfortable and people out there could be sweating, and that's actually what happened when we did the election. Um, training session where I was in the front row, Bob was here and we were perfectly fine, but it was, was it hot or cold, Becky, I forget what it was.
I don't remember, but yeah.
But we had a lot, yeah, so it's just. But we had a lot, yeah, so it's just.
I think it was cold.
Part of the challenge is that are the the way the mechanicals are set up, it's, this is like a different zone than that zone. Than that zone and we are messing around with it fairly regularly.
Yeah, I I don't mean to like say all these are big deals, it's just, I'm not quite sure who to call, and I didn't want to interrupt anybody on their day off. At all, so.
I kind of went into that process.
But it's just part of the.
Back meeting.
Staff meeting, we can talk about.
Housekeeping.
If I had written it in our coherence report, then it could have been planned, John will teach us all how to use the the thing, and honestly, I mean, that's. All it would take, but.
I, I actually appreciate your thinking of these things because, okay, you're new, you have fresh eyes, we we just get in a a road pattern. But I honestly hadn't thought about the mail and and. Where I have worked before, that was a huge deal. Who opened it, how they handled it, where it went, what the timeline, you know, so I appreciate.
That's why it's been done religiously.
Well, we could, you know what, John, processes can always be improved, really. I mean, I remember I came from three hundred and sixty improvement.
Yeah.
We were constantly. Now, some of that, yeah, we were constantly striving to. Make things, so that's all, I just, I appreciate.
Yeah, and I have no problem with the incidents reports and kind of like what Abby was saying, your memory gets fuzzy.
Yeah.
Like, it's nice to write it down in the moment, what what happened. Then try to remember it and put pieces together later on, and then.
Right, and clearly, um. Communicating what types of things, you know, these are the types of things, you know. A window is, you know, it's raining and you come in on the weekend and the roof is leaking, well, that probably is, you know, it's like pretty bad, maybe issues. About this, or you know, an irate person, just the different types of instances that we would be documenting, so it's not just totally. Up to, you know, individuals to like that. This rise to that, of course, there's going to be that judgment, but. Um, and then how does it get reviewed?
We would just, I think Daniel would say. Put together a team of people to, I I think it's always best to have odd number, but have three people. Meet and review them monthly and and it could be no trustees or it could be Lori, anybody in the office, um, it could be any of us. That's not. Relevant really, I mean, it doesn't matter as long as you designate who looks at them. You know, from my background, one of the biggest pieces of this. It's it's really important for workman's compensation and our insurance and. So I I was, you know, right away when she came back and said she fell, I'm like. Incident report. That was my first comment, it should have been documented and then. You know, asked if she had any entry from whatever, but. That's not how we do things, so.
Doesn't necessarily have to be paper either, you could do a, do we do any shared?
I did, I did, I mean, it did speak.
Files?
Oh, um.
Electronically, right.
Uh, we've all shared files electronically.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, everything I save, I save into the shared drive.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just.
Oh, you're saying that the incident report could just be an elect, I get what you're saying, okay.
As opposed to tons of this.
We can do that, yeah, we can do that. Yeah, there's no problem doing them.
Okay, it's just a thought, alright.
I have a question that I think I asked yesterday, but if you could remind all of us. Um, I think you said you expect us to have a strategic session.
In March, I actually have a a date I gotta send out for all of you, so I spoke with Jane Clark yesterday, who used to be the CEO of the.
Chamber of.
Chamber of Commisses of Holland and Zealand.
Oh.
Um, and we had a really nice session and she is very familiar with, she's watched, um. Uh, meeting videos and she's read your vision, um, exercise and your strategic plan and. She knows a little bit about you all, so she's very excited, so it would be an all day session. Um, she kind of mapped it out, how it would go, there'd be like some sort of like ice breaking session, there would be a. A point where you develop a kind of a ten year long term vision of. Like, what you'd like the township to be, like in an ideal world, like what is your. Greatest ambition and then breaking it down into a a three year plan and a one year plan, and there's an accountability piece. Um, I also talked to her kind of along the same lines of conversation we've been having now about. Need for, um, work with me and the staff. And she recommended a one day retreat, so that would be part of it too, so. We would have a retreat retreat with, um, Jane, the staff, and we would get to talk about. You know, what our goals are, what, um, you know, what our vision is, how do we see ourselves sitting in? Because I did talk to her about the fact that staff is fairly unique in that. Most of staff have a vested interest in the community. Cindy lives here, Lori lives here, Lori's on the interurban board. And they too have an interest in the vision of the township. Um, so it's a, it's a pretty unique situation and she really did recommend that. Like, you know, I talked to her too about, like, I don't always know what's going on and I need, you know. Not that I want to babysit everybody, but I would like to know what they're doing so I can better help them. Um, I can better serve everyone, and so she recommended that, so it would be this day long session for the board. There would be a document that she produced at the end of it, um, it would be a little more digestible than the current plan, it's like these multi page things. But it'd be kind of like a one pager summary and then we should, we would do a session with with just staff. Um, that would be similar to an exercise the board went through, but it would also have an accountability piece, she calls it rocks. So essentially, like, you set a goal. Then you say, okay, how do I get closer to the goal within three months, who's responsible for what, what would be the measurement, you would get together, you would determine if you're on track. Um, so I thought that was helpful because I don't really have a lot of that. That kind of soft infrastructure in terms of goal setting and accountability. Um, and it would be nice to have and it's difficult to just come up with it from, you know, ground zero. So I I think it would be helpful to invest that money into the staff. Coming up with a system where we're communicating, where we're setting goals, where we know, um, you know, what we have to accomplish in the next three months. That we're on track to accomplishing our goals. Um, especially because we have someone new, Morgan. Who I, you know, we we wanna, we really like Morgan, we think she's doing a great job and we want to make sure that she. Is happy and she's motivated and, um. If this is a a job that is, you know, stimulating for her. So that's what we talked about, so the board session, I think we were planning the week of March fourteenth, because that's the week after your March. Board meeting. And then we planned for, I think it was like June for the staff component of it. And she had a rationale for separating the two out.
Oh, yeah.
But, and then there, we also talked about public input. Because I got some input that, you know. We may not be ready for a whole bunch of public input, but I did raise the issue about what about staff input. And we're gonna do, um, interviews with the staff or she's got a plan for engaging with staff to give you all an idea going into your strategic session, like. What this staff feel like is going well, what are staff goals, what are their challenges? And that helps to inform you when you develop your own strategic plan. So you have a better understanding too of like staff capacity. Um, which I think that you all have talked about before, but this gives you a really clear window into it. So instead of doing a public input session, it's more of a a staff input session, so you get a better idea of what's going on day to day. So that's kind of what she's pitched to me. But I do think it's important because I, it's not just about goal setting, like we talked a lot about, like you have core values. And she loves core values and, you know, we also talked about how a lot of the core values are more policy driven, and I talked to her about you all. And I told them that, you know, it's not in the strategic action plan, but I know for a fact that one of their real core values is operating as a team. Um, and, you know, not necessarily, um, you know, everyone agreeing because they want to agree, but like being able to, um. Respectfully disagree is a value of yours, so coming up with these other kind of like, I don't know if they're behavioral values or character values. That then factor into the strategic plan and then also utilizing that in terms of hiring and and performance review. To make sure that the people that we're hiring are consistent with your core values. And then making sure the performance of staff is consistent with those those core values, so it's somewhat similar what you've done before, but it's a little different. It's a little different angle. So I don't know what you, you know.
Yeah, I. It's still your turn.
Oh, yeah, you answered my question.
Okay. I was. I was excited about it, so I couldn't help myself.
I know.
I was working during.
Calendar plotting and all that.
Yeah, I'll send out an email today or tomorrow, but it's gonna be the that that week of the fourteenth of March.
Are you thinking this year for weekday or weekend?
Um, I'm thinking so weekday unless you all feel strongly that that's a no, it is gonna be an all day thing, it's a nine to five. An all day. So, give me your, so yeah.
What, how do you want it to be?
There's one thing, I don't think I have something to say in the open forum.
For me, it's better later that week, cause that Tuesday is my settlement with accounting.
Okay.
Sometimes it's real quick and sometimes it takes longer.
I'm gonna talk as fast as I can, Daniel and I, we've talked about this strategic planning thing and I have some concerns about this, I'm gonna say them again now. Um, I worry about Daniel already being at capacity in this. Making life even more complicated and us dumping more things or coming up with more goals. That are just gonna dump more on you and I feel so strongly that we have accomplished so much in our short time here, not just we at the planning commission, you know, we.
Yeah.
We influence them and put the right people in the right spots. And we've done so much that I worry about this session, like. Should it be more tracking what we've already set, we've done this twice already strategically, it's not like we haven't done it. Should this be more of a time to track the things, the the building, you know, the parks mileage? The, we have so many big things going on right now, should this time be spent just tracking what we already have in place, maybe clarifying some things? Um, I question the need for a nine to five, I think that the brain power and the stamina and the creativity can really diminish. In a long day like that, um. I think the first time we did it, it was at the historical.
Yeah, that's a good.
And I wanted to say that, it's like maybe a four hour session, and that felt really right.
Ninety one or something.
Yeah, um, and I'm, I'm sorry, I just have to word mama all this out, otherwise, ugh. It's just who I am, um, the staff piece, I'm all for, I think that's long overdue and I think take that a date, have fun. To team build, to hear what they have to say, we've done a lot of this work already, you know, and I'm not saying. Don't, I'm just saying, let's be careful, I don't want to try to reinvent a wheel, I don't want to put more on you, um. Okay, sorry.
Several of us have had conversations about it, we've never sat down. And listed what we think are our accomplishments.
I know.
Going all the way back to day one, and we've probably forgotten some. So maybe that could be a exercise we each do before we get into the session and then. Then, you know, share them all. That's one thought, the other thing is that, though we talked about. We ha- we still have the tracking system that Griffin.
A red, green, yellow thing.
Yeah, and I thought part of this was you were going to update that.
Yeah, that would take a lot of work, I mean, I can't.
I know, but not as much work as starting over, a lot of this sounds a little starting over.
I mean, a lot of those goals are just, I mean, cause that had, that has not been updated since Griffin left, so like a lot of this stuff is like accomplished. And like essentially we have to.
That would help us to know.
Yeah, repopulated.
I thought you only done something.
I don't think so.
I, uh. So I don't know exactly what that session would look like, but I, I don't know, it's just my.
I can share with you the the outline that she shared with me, cause part of it that, I know that part of the component of it was to. Like, list the things that you're most proud of and to, there is a reflection piece there, but I could talk to her about like. Modifying it so it's less, you know, establishing new goals and taking it down from the eight hour.
Yeah, and I would suggest it strikes me as excessive to do a ten year out.
It's, that's, the ten year out is very, um, it's pioneer, yeah.
I know, well, exactly.
Yeah, so it's like, it's more of a statement, like, it's a question of like, who do we want to be in ten years? Um, like I kind of went through some of it with her.
Alive would be good.
Yeah.
So she realized it. Yeah. There's some older people involved.
Um, no, I think we can, yeah, a a place where people can afford to live, a place where we we, um, conserve nature and have parks and tr- you know, more of that.
Yeah, very general, not specific. Yeah.
Yeah, I I get what you're saying, we just don't necessarily need to be redundant and. Your time is really valuable and. Yeah, so it's more me trying to protect. I love it, I I love the team building, I love getting together and talking about our goals, what we've accomplished, but. I just don't think we, we need to just watch being redundant and creating more work. And we have so many big things going on right now.
Oh, I always think, the first thing I think of. Um, is you, because you still have children at school, you, I can't even picture you ever doing an eight hour thing, but, um.
I don't know how people do it.
I know, and it is true, your brain does kind of turn to mush, unless what you're doing all day is really uplifting. You know what I mean? Cause see, there's, I'm sure there's been research on how long your brain lasts.
Yes.
In that kind of a thing, but I, to me, I think what would be wonderful is to sit down and talk about. And really maybe look back a couple minutes or something, but talk about what we have accomplished, I think that would be so uplifting.
And if she were want to want to send, I know our last one, we did during the height of COVID or at least some midpoint of COVID, I can't remember.
It was high, it was all.
We had to do Zoom and we got a lot of homework, oh, there were so many assignments that we had, but we did, um. I feel like I got my heels nipped a couple times, like Abby, do your homework, which is fine, I got it in, I got it in.
I gotta tell your slugs.
They know, um, so, I mean, if she wants to give us homework ahead of time, pre-work, you know, I think.
Yeah, reasonable.
So then we're like, oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, remember when we. You know, put all of our meetings on YouTube or I don't know.
Approved this.
That was one of the first things we do.
Things, things will occur to us and then we can, so we're not sitting there in a meeting like. Um, let me think.
No, right, you have to have some free work to do that.
Okay, anything else?
I do think she's a a really neat person, she, she, um, was the president of the Chamber of Congress Holland Zealand. Form joined together years ago, she was part of that and she's been with them thirty three years. So she has a pretty good background in leadership.
Fresh energy and fresh.
So, yeah, I think it's nice that you.
It might be a little too liberal for.
I don't think so, you're all right, yeah, I don't think so, I think it'd be pleasantly surprising.
I want to go off.
Okay, um, do we have public?
We don't have public.
Maybe I'm.
No.
I think that's. It's just us.
Just us.
Just us.
Alright, um, close to public comment. And, um. Our next scheduled meeting is our regular meeting December fourteen, twenty twenty two at six P M, and with that, I'll go ahead and. Adjourn the special meeting of the township township board at one twenty nine P M.